We'd like to call together this meeting of the planning board for May 2nd, 2019. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Welcome, everyone. In case you didn't hear me, this is the planning board meeting for May 2nd, 2019.
Do you want a motion?
I would like one. Thank you.
To take item 7D out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Item 7D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 6.1.1.1, alteration of a non-conforming use by the zoning bylaws, 336 Cambridge Street. Lynn Shway is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of May 16th, 2019, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated May 1st, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take item 7F out of order.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Item 7F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Mahler Road. Edward and Elena Ivitskaya are the applicants.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of May 16th, 2019, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated May 2nd, 2019.
Second.
Before we vote, just a quick question. Is this item 7F or item 7E?
It's 7E.
7E.
Yeah.
So you need to change that motion, right?
That's right. Or just that top item where it says item...
Need to re-vote?
Do you want me to re-vote?
No. All right. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero.
Okay, somebody else's turn.
Make a motion to take items 7F and 7G out of order and together for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Item 7F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street. The Granite Place is the applicant. And item 7G, discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change for 376 Cambridge Street, 376 Cambridge Street LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, can I... Sorry?
I just want to make a comment.
Sure. So we do have a lot of abutters that are very interested in 376 Cambridge Street, and I just wanted to let them know the reason for continuance. So this property sits on the Burlington-Bilbrica line, so within 300 feet there are Bilbrica abutters. The advertisement went out smoothly with the... for the Burlington abutters, but not for the Bilbrica abutters. So it will be properly advertised for the next meeting, but it just didn't capture all 300 feet. So that's the reason for continuance, for the procedural error. But we should hear them on the 16th. And anyone who's in the audience and listening, if you want to call the planning board office, we can put you on a list of notification of... or any meetings that might come up, or subcommittee meetings, or just any update on meeting coming up on the 16th. So contact the planning office and leave your name with our administrative staff, Jen Jalinas, or anyone in the office.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe that has been moved and sec... Oh, wait. No, I need a motion, I think, to continue from someone.
Okay, I'll do it. Motion to continue the matter to planning board meeting of May 16th, 2019. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Announcements. The Historic Commission has an open house at the museum this Saturday, May 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00. I think I said last time they are recommending parking across the street at Simons Park. The next one, May Town Meeting, is right around the corner, starting May 13th, 7:30. There's also a special town meeting, within town meeting, that will start May 20th, and that was for some of... few items that I believe it was a timing posting discussion. But one of those is the small cell wireless facilities general bylaw piece. So what we expect is this... that item will be taken together on May 20th for discussion. So if anyone's interested in the small cell wireless technology piece, we anticipate it to be on May 20th of town meeting. Also, Memorial Day holiday, May 27th, all our offices will be closed. I hope everyone has terrific plans. And lastly, we have two terrific games on television tonight, starting at 7:30 and 8:15 with the Bruins and Red Sox. So hopefully, we can get to efficiency.
Which sport is that?
No chance of that.
Motion to watch those games.
All right. Thank you. We do not have any legal notices?
Yes. One other...
Announcement?
Announcement, if I could, and that is, I noticed that our former planning director, Teri Zold, is being honored by MIT for her, what did they say, two and a half decades there. She was our planning director from '88 to '94, I believe, if that sounds right, and before Kristen and before Tony Fields. And she startled us off on the right path, I think. Anyways.
So congratulations to her.
Can we send our best wishes to her?
Sure. That'd be great. I can organize that.
There is a way on the RSVP if you can't go personally to...
Well, from the board.
Yes.
Sure. Kristen, did you overlap with her at all?
I didn't, but I have done some... not done some work, but know her through planning organizations, and have met with her quite a bit, and she speaks fondly of all of you in a teasing kind of way in some ways, but she very much enjoyed her time here in Burlington.
Well, if you met her...
Always asked me to give you all her best.
Knew her, you would remember her. She was really outstanding.
She was phenomenal. She was really one of the brightest people I've ever met.
She went from MIT, so...
Really, yeah.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
We do not have any non-approvals, so we'll move on to item 6, administrative matters. The first item is 6A, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change to a subdivision, 36 Mill Street. Beverly Van Nostrend is the applicant. Welcome, and please state your names for the record.
Steven Dresser, Dresser Williamson Way.
Thank you.
I have some extra copies of plans. I know Josh was putting out some 11 by 17. These are kind of larger sheets. There's also a couple.
So we'll hold them. If the 11 by 17, if you want a bigger one, we'll just shout out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Start out by saying I also had some personal experience with Teri Zold, and she's everything that you say she is. She really was. We are here for a modification of a subdivision that was approved as three lots in 2005, and two of the lots had a common driveway at that time. This is Beverly Van Nostrend. She's the owner of the property. In 2005, she entered in a contract to sell to a builder, and at that time, as they went through the process, it was determined that the common driveway was not allowable in the town of Burlington, and they had to kind of go back to the drawing board. As far along as they were with the builder, they actually revised it to two lots, so it was just two driveways. And they obtained approval from the Conservation Commission at that time. The project did not come back to the planning boards, my understanding, and it still exists as three lots. So we are basically here just to talk about... you know, we're not changing any lot lines. It exists as three lots. We're kind of changing the access and the driveways. A significant portion of the lot is under an easement by Eversource, and they have significant control over their easements. The driveways must be more than 25 feet from any tower, and they also can control positioning of the driveways. And they have told us we cannot use the existing curb cut and the existing gravel way out there. We are putting in three... the proposal is to put in three driveways. There are three existing curb cuts where these are going. We are not creating a curb cut. We have made a submittal for a modification to the Conservation Commission, modification to their order of conditions, and we're granted that. They did review drainage and other conservation type issues. We do have to go back on May 23rd, however, because the original order is expiring, so we just need to go back for an extension to that order. Drainage was reviewed and accepted with conditions by the Board of Health and the Engineering Department, and we've received an affirmative letter from the Fire Department. So as I stated, Beverly is here. She owns the property, and hopefully between us, we can answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this was way back in 2005. When we first looked at the subdivision, the first iteration had a shared drive that went, as Steve Dresser mentioned, from the access drive all the way to the two back lots. It was a shared drive. It was directly under the power lines. It was... and it was using that access point, which National... is it National Grid?
It's Eversource.
Eversource. So Eversource didn't want to use that drive. The police department had voiced concern over the shared drive, so they had to move everything out of... from 25 feet from the power lines, as mentioned, to kind of this side, as you see configured. I do want to mention, if you look at the dotted line that goes in front of the houses as proposed, that's the line... that's the easement line. So there's literally only that small portion where the houses can be located, so there isn't a lot of wiggle room where the structures can be, because there can be no structure underneath the power lines. They have gone to Concom Board of Health for the driveway locations. I know today, in the pre-meeting with the chair and vice chair, we were talking a little bit about the site distance and curb cut. Of the existing curb cuts is the existing curb cut for the first house is right after that kind of curve and dip in Mill Street. So is there any opportunity to consolidate a little bit on that end? But it's one of those... there's just not a lot of flexibility in the layout of these lots with the challenges between the easement and the house placement. So I think this iteration, if they keep the drive separate, is probably one of the better layouts that I've certainly seen. If we wanted to talk, as discussed today, about any consolidation, I'm sure you guys can talk about that. But overall, we would recommend favorably on the general layout of what's in front of you.
Thank you. Member Pimble, are you going to go to department reports?
Okay, so we have... first one is EPW and Engineering, and it's dated 4/319. There's basically... I mean, I can... there's about three pages here?
Yeah.
I can read them all, or we can watch the Bruins game. Actually, have you... do you have a copy of those, or...
Yeah.
Did you guys get a copy of those?
Yeah, we've had a couple back and forth since then, and I believe we've reached and received an email today that basically says we're okay. I sent them some calculations and...
Okay, so you have the... what appears to be the most recent... well, this one is dated April 29th. Is that the last date?
I think it's a... there's a May 2nd email.
Yes.
There's one that came in late this afternoon.
Okay.
Engineering is all set with the project, if that's... and the comments are pretty standard.
Okay. It's also... it says drawing date, April 23rd. Not sure what that's referencing. Fire Department is favorable. Fire Department's comment, favorable approval as submitted. Board of Health... let's see, Rain Garden. Talks in relation to the rain. The Rain Garden shall be installed and depicted in revised site plan and stormwater calculation submitted 4/15/2019 by Dresser Williamson Way. Obviously, you have that. So I assume you have this. It talks about the test pits. It looks like it's fairly standard.
Yeah, and we have no problem with those conditions.
Okay, so this one is again dated April 24th, so I assume you have that most recent. Okay. And then we have Conservation Commission and their comments. The application has... the applicant has filed for an extension for her wetland permit. The Commission will review the proposed changes to the driveway runoff mitigation at that time, May 23rd. So that's the only comment they had. And that was...
Pretty recent.
I'm not sure why it's dated. Yeah, so that's yesterday, right? So that's the comments.
Okay. Rather than start at one end, I'm actually going to start with Joe to my left, because we did have a pre-meeting today, and Mr. Pimble came up with what I think was a really good idea for improvement that would probably be beneficial for everyone that's living in those houses in the future. So I thought I'd let him explain.
Yeah, so it looked fine. The only thing that concerned me was, and anyone who knows the area knows the topography, that's kind of a... is a curve, kind of a dangerous curve there, and a grade differential that's pretty substantial. And then we have three curb cuts for three driveways, which was a little concerning to me, which, you know, other than that, everything looked fine. But the suggestion I had was to maybe off of Mill Street, go as far... and I'm trying to think. It's not... it doesn't look like it's north to south. It looks like it may be so north...
Oh, it is, yeah.
It looks west, east to west, and I'd say this would be the west direction. Is that...
Which way is towards the wires?
Towards... in the direction...
Of the house?
Away from the house, so closest to the high tensions. My suggestion would be to maybe put a common entrance and exit, which would be a little bit wider than the driveway, off of the main road, and then as it gets onto the property, very short distance onto the property, break it off into three driveways. So we don't have three separate curb cuts. We have one curb cut that then just breaks into, and it virtually could almost stay exactly as it is in relation to the two back lots. They would all just come off of one curb cut, and then the front lot would be... would be probably the biggest change of location. It would... it would make it a lot easier, because it would push the curb cuts into one, and it would push them as far away from that dangerous corner as we could get. So again, that was my suggestion. I don't know if...
My only concern is that, you know, what has happened in the past is we weren't allowed to use a common driveway. That's essentially a common driveway. I'm not sure.
What... that's not... what Joe's suggestion is not a common driveway, but rather one very wide entrance. It's wide enough for multiple cars to pass, and then have it split off into three. So it would not be deep into the property at all. And you could also probably move the driveways, if you did that, so that right now, you have three driveways on one property. So that first property has two other driveways cutting across its front yard, for all intents and purposes. You could move it so that there wasn't as much driveway going across.
Where those two driveways are is essentially where they need to be, based on the Eversource. You know, once you get onto the...
And they will be. And actually...
Once you get onto the lot. So there's no way around kind of those two extra driveways on that one lot.
And virtually stay the same place, only if you look where the Rain Garden is, somewhere in the vicinity of that... of the first...
First drive.
Yeah, the first curb cut and the Rain Garden would actually be the common entrance and exit. And then, very short distance off of that, it would then break into the three driveways.
Are you saying the left one would be...
The left one.
Further left would be.
Yeah, the furthest left would take it away from that dangerous curve, and it would make it so much easier for traffic flow to have one entrance and exit.
I agree with everything you're saying. I'm just... my only concern is, does it meet zoning? Is this something that's doable through the zoning department? Do you... because my understanding is...
Yes. I understand your concern, and we could condition it as such with the understanding that if, for some reason, the police department or the fire department had a problem with it, we would work with them to make it work. What it... the benefit you get is you remove that driveway that's so close to the dangerous curve.
100% agree with what you're saying, you know, providing that everybody else is.
Right.
Understood.
I would imagine police would be very much in favor of it.
I would think so.
Yeah, sorry.
Take away a dangerous...
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I was looking.
Yeah, you got this.
Okay.
So we have, in other situations, one of the most more recent... Wilmington Road, if you're... that property that had that long, long driveway. There was initially that long driveway, and then it split off, but the police department said, well, if you... and there was the wetland hindrance right up front. So they said, okay, get over the culvert and one, but as quickly as possible, try to get into a separate drive. So it's really just you're coming in and then splitting off. That long, long share drive has been a problem, as we've mentioned with some other projects. So I think if we had a centralized curb cut and quickly split off, I mean, if you kind of think like a tree, like quickly spread off, split off. I can't speak for the police department, but I think that they've been more favorable to that than if it was a long shared drive.
And I think it's key. What Joe is suggesting is it's not where you first enter. It's not one driveway's width. It would be wide enough that someone could enter and exit, or someone else could exit at the same time.
Be similar to a road width.
Yep.
Yes, but then it would branch off very quickly as soon as it entered the property.
Just also, that Rain Garden area needs to be a certain size, so we can all...
We'd have to move the Rain Garden, probably.
Reshape it, I think.
Or reshape it, whichever.
Yeah.
You know, it... but what it would do is, if you look at the first house closest to the street, that driveway would actually... a lot of that driveway would no longer be there. So that would be a lot of... that would be grass area, or Rain Ga... or, you know, however, whatever you want to do with that. So in other words, the driveway would be coming in from this direction. So a lot of that driveway closest to the street wouldn't be there. You could even locate a Rain Garden there if you want. You know, it'll be up to you. It doesn't... right.
Right. And it would probably be a benefit for that first house as well, since it has driveways cutting across the front lawn. They gain a side lawn when you do that, when you remove that driveway.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are you talking even further, looking at the plan to the left?
Did you sketch something, Joe? Renee, did you sketch something out?
We did.
We did.
Okay. Are you talking even further to the left on the plan?
As far to the left, yeah. Yes.
Oh, way down there. So right where the... good. Okay, thank you.
Furthest away from that curve as we can get.
Yeah, I follow you.
Then it consolidates it into one exit, one entrance, instead of three in a row.
So that would probably mean that you would run the driveway for the first house.
It's very rough.
Right. You'd reroute the driveway for the first house, and the other ones would virtually stay the same.
Get that lawn back. Yeah.
Right.
The easiest thing for us to do is if you guys want to set the goal, being eliminate the more dangerous curb cut from the existing house and try to consolidate the two, and then we can work out the details as to how it lays out, if you all agree with that from us.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's going to be hard to agree to a very specific thing right now.
Right. We understand that.
But certainly, the concept seems...
If you can work together with staff and the other departments, I think it would work out better for you as well.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Thank you. So the reason that the driveways run through... so you're obviously going to have an easement with that first piece of property, even the second one. The reason the driveways to the back house and to the second one from the back run through this property is because you cannot move them any further to the left. Eversource won't let you...
One of their conditions is you can't be within 25 feet of one of their poles. So that pulls you to the right. And then there's an existing gravel road out there across the dome, and they do not... they're not going to allow the use of that either. So that pretty much eliminates everything to the left of where the main poles are. So yes, that's the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, that was it.
All right, then.
Well, I was just going to say, if you're familiar with this planning board, there are two things that we get itchy about, and one is curb cuts and the other is shared driveways. So I think this would work towards the solution of both. So it gives you not really a shared driveway, but a shared entrance, and it moves the curb cut, which... and makes one curb cut, which makes us happier.
I agree. I, like I said, the concept definitely to have fewer curb cuts in there.
Well, when I looked at that, with all the markings on there, it looked like somebody was having a median planning.
I'm sure they knew what it meant at the time.
That's called brainstorming, right?
Yes.
And we apologize, Mrs. Van Nostrend. I know she's been... it's been a long process for you.
Exactly, yes.
Hopefully, this is the end of it.
I'll miss you.
I'll say.
Jack?
Did you review the... it is an easement. They don't own title to the land.
Correct.
Did you review the terms of that easement, or did you just take their word for what they said you couldn't do?
Taking their word for as long as...
Yeah, they lie sometimes, in my experience.
I know that they have to grant her a license to use, to put the driveways over there.
Well, chances are, it's...
So that gives them...
It's her land.
Yeah. I know that's generally how an easement works, but I believe in this particular case, especially where they have to give her a license to travel over it.
This is the 1929 easement, because I know I own part of the 1929 easement way out in the back of my land. And, you know, if they put something within 25 feet of their edge, they can't preclude you from doing something. I would, before you sit down with staff, to work... I would read that easement to make sure that they're not telling you something prohibiting you.
I've got feelings if we can accommodate their request.
Okay.
It's better than fighting with them, so to speak, if we can't accommodate what they have to say.
One of the fellows that wanted to buy it in 2014, he started, and by 2016, it was back and forth and not making any ground at all. It was like a...
With Eversource?
Yes. And for the driveways, because we couldn't have the driveway that was approved, the shared, and Eversource wanted the shared driveway. You know, it was just... and it was almost two years this fellow put a lot of time and money into this.
How many towers are on that property?
Three.
Three lines of towers, or?
Three.
Three lines of?
Three towers.
Three sets of lines, yeah.
Sets of towers, yeah.
Are they all wood, or some of them steel?
One... two. The originals are steel, and the new one, the latest one, was wood.
Yeah, you certainly couldn't do anything to undermine if they're up on a hill. That would be a problem. But hey, if you want to take their word and follow their requirements, you're a guest.
We'll take it under advisement, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mike?
I'm Mike in Central District. Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Mine as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie?
I think Joe and the chair came up with a good idea.
I would like to take credit, but it was Joe's idea, so... All right. Is there anyone in the audience that had a comment on this matter? Seeing no one, I am ready for a motion.
Motion to approve an engineering change application in accordance with section 7.2.1 of the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations to a previously approved definitive subdivision plan to allow for drainage utility enhancements, as well as a reconfiguration of the driveways to each of the lots, as shown on the plan entitled, "36 Mill Street Subdivision, Burlington, Mass., prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way, dated February 1st." Is that still the accurate date?
And revised to April.
And revised to April 12th. There are no changes to... I think we need to change that legislation, as discussed and to be finalized with planning board staff.
So there is... there are still no changes to the lotting plan?
Leo, the subdivision lots, or frontage, okay. Said engineering change is subject to the following revision terms and conditions, as amended, as listed, and as discussed and revised. Okay?
Yeah, if you look at A and B, it's similar to what your discussion has been.
Yep. Second you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. I hope this is the end of a very long road for you.
Well, no, I've got Eversource.
That's true.
You can still come back and visit us once.
Good luck.
How lucky it was the night with the hockey game. We're moving along.
Best of luck to you with it.
Best of luck to you with it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to matters of appointment, item seven, I would like to have a motion to take item seven A, B, and C together, please.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, seven zero. Item seven A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 7.2.6, increasing the maximum parking space requirements of the zoning bylaws, two twenty, excuse me, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street. Iconic Capital LLC is the applicant. Item seven B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.4.1.11, discharge from manmade structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street. Iconic Capital LLC is the applicant. And item seven C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street. Iconic Capital LLC is the applicant. Welcome, and please state your names for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and staff, I'm Bill Proia for the applicant.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Letterer, and I represent the Iconic Capital.
Thank you.
And I'm Frank DePietro, the BSC group.
We have a couple more folks, if we need to have them answer questions or make presentations, they can introduce themselves when they step forward. Thank you.
Sounds good. Why don't you give us a brief update on what's changed since our last meeting?
Thank you. So we, I want to refer to the April 26 letter and maybe just add a little color to that. The tenant, obviously, everyone knows who that is now, and we tried to provide the required or the requested operational information that would help the board evaluate the proposal. And I just wanted to add a couple of comments about that, and then, you know, take questions if there are anything on that, and then Frank can go over the site plan changes, and Sam will talk about the traffic as well. As his initial analysis was just based on a traditional model for a government office with this flexible scheduling and the field work component, we think it, you know, further minimizes the impacts of the traffic of the project, so I think that'll be helpful to hear from Sam. So just quickly on the letter, the 75 employees and the percentage of them that won't be there.
Would you move the microphone just a little bit closer?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ernie. Essentially, if you go sort of through that quickly and do the numbers out and those percentages, you'll come up with typically about 50 to 55 people in the office at any time during the day, and with the visitors, you'll get into the 60 or 65 range. So that just gives you kind of a feel for the number of parking spaces that will be needed and why the plan that we proposed, we proposed, with that 71 spaces, and then the reserved spaces. And I know there's a question about how we specifically identified the visitor spaces, and we just did that to sort of come up with a, just a notation and a representation that there would be some visitors occasionally coming to the site, but we didn't want to just say that it's five and that's all there'll be. So this updated letter is helpful in that regard to me, and I hope to the board, in that there'll be typically 10 visits during a day, nine to four typically. Obviously, well, in most cases, not all there at the same time. So we think the five will work, but in the case where there's, you know, one or two more than five, or they may overlap a little bit, again, they're typically about an hour-long sessions or appointments that are scheduled, there'll be enough spaces in the lot that aren't specifically designated for visitors, but will be available for visitors. So I just wanted to point that out, so you understand that. I know there was a specific question about that five number, but that's how it would work, and these latest numbers, I think, really help illuminate that. The other thing about these numbers is, and I think someone asked me last time, I didn't know the answer, and that's going to be helpful, whether this office was going to be a new office or a relocated office, so it's a relocated office. There's an existing office in Cambridge, and this office will take the place of that office. So the data we have here about the number of employees, you know, the percentage that won't be there, that are out in the field on any particular day, is real data, meaning they know how that office operates, the same folks are coming here, so I think that should be sort of encouraging or, you know, comforting to the board to know that. I thought that was important for me to understand that, so I could convey that to you. So I wanted to just give you that piece of it and answer any questions if you have about those. And I wanted to kind of segue into a question I know that Member Kelly had about the size of the office and the floor plan submitted, so two sort of points on that. The floor, and Jerry can talk about that as well, the floor plan. That wasn't anything but sort of showing how the space could lay out specifically for illustration purposes. It may not be the exact floor plan, it probably will not be the exact floor plan that's constructed, at least for now, because we know there are only 75 employees. We didn't have that data specifically before, when the floor plan was drafted, so that's why it doesn't look like it will probably look. But in any case, I think it's good to know that there's space for expansion, if that ever happens, there's no plan for that, but it could expand to that sort of floor plan if necessary. And again, if you take that number of, say, 100 employees, if it ever got to that point, and you, again, run those numbers, about the 35% in the field, the 10% on any given day on vacation, or sick, or, you know, personal time, you'll see a similar correlation. In other words, you know, you'd end up with about 75 or 80 spaces at any one time, including visitors on the site, and that's where the reserve parking would come in. If it was necessary to make a request to the board to release that, those additional spaces would accommodate that kind of growth. Again, even though we don't know, it's not planned now, but it could accommodate the growth, so we would be able to comfortably grow, accommodate visitors without having impacts on the neighborhood. I know there were questions about, well, we don't want people being frustrated, can't park on site, and maybe looking toward the neighborhood for parking. That will not happen, based on how we, how it's designed in the reserve parking that we're requesting, so I think that also is something to look at. And again, Member Kelly had a question about the operation, he has experience in the past with DSS, formerly, DCF, formerly DSS. And so there's a couple of things we'd like to point out about that operational question he had, and there's three sort of things to think about that. We were told by DCF about that question about sort of a bigger group of people being there than the 10 that we're talking about, and why things have changed since then till now, so. Is that, was that essentially the question, Member Kelly, about?
Yes, I think we'd all like to hear the question, because I wasn't sure what the question was.
I have dealt with that agency and have been there for certain types of meetings that may well include eight to 10 outside people, not employees, but I also know that at any given time, a number of the employees are not there, they're either in court or out in the field doing work, so I'd rely upon their current scheduling. And I do know it used to be a number of the employees would show back in the afternoon to enter data and do reports, but I'm sure they can file those electronically from off-site now, so I'm not so concerned if, in fact, there's only 70 or 75 employees. What did throw me for a curve was, when I saw the layout, I saw the places for 101 to 105, and if that is not actually what they're going to have, then I'm not as concerned. But if there is the potential for it to expand, and you do require additional spaces, I think there are some conditions we could put in there to protect against overcrowding of the lot and having people park somewhere outside, because the last thing we want is people parking on the neighborhood streets.
Yeah, no, I think.
And as long as the operation is set up for trips and parking to preclude that, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, there's also one other thing that we can't predict very accurately, but that will also be the case. Again, because of the office moving, it's a little bit different. There'll be a certain number of employees and visitors that will take public transportation or ride sharing or some other options like that, so we don't really know what that number will be at this point.
Most of those employees are frontline workers who go out of the field, and my understanding is the agency does not provide vehicles for them, they have to have their own vehicle, so they're going to drive to the site.
Yeah, those employees will when they come. I was, I just meant.
That's got to be most of them, yeah.
I just meant the support staff that would be coming to work every day, that didn't necessarily have field obligations or responsibilities for those type folks.
In my recollection, there's not much support staff, there is the frontline workers, their supervisors, the regional people, and then maybe a receptionist, a mailroom clerk, and housekeeping or something. There's probably four or five max people who are there nine to five.
Yeah, that's exactly the same kinds of ratios, but.
Okay, before, are you done with your initial presentation?
I think I'd like to have Frank through the site plan changes. Since last time, I think there's some good improvements, he was responding to some of the neighbors' comments and some of the board's comments, so I think it'll be helpful.
So again, for the record, Frank DePietro with BSC, and to sort of hit a couple of the highlights, and we can go into more detail. When we last left off.
Frank, excuse me, can you go, oh, maybe with us, ease a little bit, just a bit.
And also, just, everybody speak up, the jet engines on, and it's always hard to hear from people in the back, and even on TV.
All righty, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When we last left off, there was the issue of the drainage in the front, so this little triangle area over in here, there was sort of a little back and forth between the Board of Health and the Planning Board, there was a subcommittee meeting, and what we talked about was putting in an area where we would have an infiltration, it'd be like a lawn-type catch basin, there'd be an infiltration area here, and that would infiltrate the runoff from this triangle, there'd be an overflow into the on-site drainage system. We had sized the infiltration system back here to handle all of that flow, even though we knew some would be going into the ground, so that was sort of a backup safety. And the one unknown we had was, what was the soils out there? So we went out, my associate colleague Emily Durig and myself went out, did a test pit, we found suitable soils, not great, but suitable soils. I surprised everybody back in the office by coming in wearing dungarees, a flannel shirt, and work boots.
What kind of tie do you wear with that?
Necktie.
I have a tie, they were shocked. So what we have designed here is, with the sidewalk that's going to be improved, but basically, that's raising up that existing area, so this will essentially be a high point that will prevent water from flowing out onto the sidewalk into Cambridge Street. There's a low area here that picks up, very small, no issue of drowning or anything like that with the Board of Health. The water goes into an underground, essentially basin, infiltrates into the ground, and there's an overflow into the system. That, we went to the Board of Health on April 24th, there were no abutters there, even though we advertised it pretty actively at the last Planning Board hearing, and the Board of Health has issued recommendation to incorporate that. The Board of Health did witness that test pit, Christine Mathews was out there, so that's sort of one item that we took a look at. Excuse me, there were some concerns from the abutter about landscaping, so this landscape land shows that we've got a double row of arbrevides in that area, they had to block that off. We met with the staff and the Murray's yesterday in the planning office, that I think seemed to be offset, they didn't have any issues, they weren't going to be here tonight. And then we've looked at, and we'll get into another plan, the sidewalk. So we had talked about, again, here is our site right here, Chestnut Avenue, Wilmington Road, we talked about having a sidewalk that would extend along Chestnut Avenue down to Wilmington Road. As we've noted in the past, there were four trees, at least two of them would have to be removed to put the sidewalk on the northerly side of Chestnut Ave. We think that's the best place to put it, you know, the bus, the bus shelter is right here, all the residents would be on this side, there is the issue of the trees being removed, we'd be willing to not replace the size of the trees, but put trees in to replace any trees we took down, and then we'd build that sidewalk. There was some discussion just today about the brick bending. This area is very tight between, we don't have a final, but where the fences are and where the curb is, maybe it's about five feet, we've got a curb and a four-foot sidewalk, it would be very tight to put anything in there, including a tree. What we would be certainly interested in doing is, along the Cambridge Street section here, looking at having the vertical granite curbing, the four-foot concrete sidewalk, and then having the two brick bins behind that across our site here. I'd want to look at the bus station, the bus stop. I want to look at the bus, I'm not sure, we want to have the brick right there, depending how that falls in.
Yep.
Before you, just back on the sidewalk that's in front of the Cambridge Street part of the property, would that be with a grass strip in between? So it would go roadway, curb, grass strip, cement, walkway?
No, well, we tried that with building 19. This is under Mass DOT jurisdiction, Mass DOT does not want to have to worry about the maintenance of that grass strip, so they required us, we did go to them, we had that design plan, they required us to have the curb right up against the sidewalk. They don't really want to maintain the brick either, so there's a sub-agreement that the developer signed, that they will maintain the brick. And we had to, in that case, make sure that where we could, the brick was outside of the right-of-way. We couldn't do it all the way, but where we could, the back of the sidewalk is right on the right-of-way, and that was per Mass DOT. I would certainly imagine that would be what they would propose, they would require here. We can certainly ask that question, but I think we're going to get turned down, to be honest, based on our recent experience.
Just to that point, if this board was supportive of that, we do have it written like that, that we prefer this, but understand that DOT has the, you know, final design choice, but we just wanted to reflect, if that was the will of the board, our preference for that type of layout, so.
Okay.
To Frank's point, yes, we had some hiccups in some other areas, but we, I think we should ask, and if it.
So that's in relation to the grass strip, but the brick, you would do the same agreement that you did at 19, right? You'd just, you'd incorporate the brick, and then they would just have an agreement for maintenance of the brick if there were any maintenance.
Yes. Other than that, we can talk about traffic, I've got Sam Ophiato here. Before I go, this is a rendered landscape plan, so we took the site plan rendering, put it on an aerial, just to sort of show you what we're looking at. You can see along the front here, we've got some various, they're kind of canopy trees, these are probably, based on what the landscape officer told me, probably 12 to 18 feet high, probably three, two to three-inch caliper tree. We have, again, along the edges here, some screening, lawn areas, this would be a meadow area, once we clean it up, if this is built, we've got some, again, some screening along the edges here as well. We have a little bit of planting over here, and we've got some nice little planting along that parking area there and the stairs that go up, so be happy to answer any specific questions, but if you'd like, I'll turn it over to Sam to talk a little bit about the transportation traffic issue.
Madam Chairman, Frank, can you, some of the neighbors are wondering about headlights in the parking lot, and I know we discussed the kind of the elevations of the site and what was around, can you talk through that a little bit, as you did with us the other day?
There's a couple of pictures, that's just one, so back in February 2018, and I went out to the site, because I figured, knowing the abutters, that these are issues, so these parking spaces here at the rear of the site face, again, north. face, again, north. The picture you're seeing, I was standing about here, so that's maybe a little bit five feet above grade there, um, and I was looking in that direction with February 13. So you can sort of see that even in the winter, there's a heavy screening of existing brush, um, and you really can't see much, you certainly, if there's a car park that the lights on and you look through the, you're gonna see something through the trees, um, but you're not gonna have direct headlights going out, they're gonna be relatively screened from the existing vegetation, which is probably six or 700 feet from the back of these parking spaces through that wetland area and the trees. So that's just sort of a, a response to that question, we saw the email on that.
Kristen, did you talk, did, uh, you discuss the lanterns at all, uh?
Um, I did, but I haven't brought them up yet here, but if you wanna bring them, I, I did speak with the applicant about.
Okay. So one of the other things, Frank, we had discussed was, as in the center of town, and I understand this is outside of the overlay district, but we're trying to have a uniformity and, you know, given the fact that this was a historic site and site next to it's a historic site, we wanted to kind of bring in, you know, a little bit of period lighting and things like that that may go along with it, so in that strip where we had, you know, where the walkway was and the trees are gonna be going, it'd be possible to incorporate some lanterns, you know, as you see throughout the center of Burlington.
This would be along Chestnut Avenue or across our frontage?
Both.
Okay, um, I will bring that to the attention of my client. And I don't know the answer to this, the only question I'd have is, um, who would be responsible for the, those light, would that be something that the DPW has to approve? On the building 19 site, those lights are on private property. So my question would be, at least on Chestnut, that would be on a public right-of-way. Um, again, that would be a question for DPW, so I think if I'll refer to my client, if he'd be willing to do that, um, but my only other real question would be, would that be allowed by the town DPW? They'd have to maintain that. We would probably take care of our site, but we wouldn't take care of the lighting on Chestnut Ave.
Right, and the lighting on Chestnut Ave would probably have to be on the opposite side from the sidewalk, otherwise it would be in the way of the sidewalk, just.
Right, I mean, you may have enough space for a foot or so to put a, a, a signal and a light in there.
Yep.
But again, I think you'd wanna have something to light the sidewalk, in my mind.
Right.
Um, and I'm presuming the bus stop is on that side too, so the sidewalk would be sort of awaiting.
Yeah, I mean, it really would, you know, at, at night when people are getting off the bus, it really would enhance it as well as the aesthetics of it, you know, would, would really enhance the aesthetics as well, so. Um, yeah, I mean, you know, whatever needs to be done, Kristen, I guess with, I think the town, from the town's perspective, I think we're, you know, if it's incorporated into a site plan and as part of a site plan, I would imagine it would be, you know, DPW may wanna comment on it if they.
Yeah, where they're adjacent to the prop, private properties, um, we've had them loop into their electrical system, but here, I mean, going all the way down Chestnut isn't adjacent to their property, so I think there is, I, I think it's a question of, um, along the front of the site and being responsible for the power of the lights, and then the second question of how many lights are you looking for, you know, number of lights on Chestnut, and then I would advise, if you wanted to ask the applicant, that you're asking for the lights, not the lights and the power and the maintenance.
Right.
Along Chestnut.
Right.
As it's the off-site piece.
So who's responsible for the maintenance of the lights that are on, in front of the property on Cambridge Street? Because I know that we, I had asked you a question recently about a different property where lights had been vandalized and it was actually not the town's responsibility to repair them. It was the property owner's responsibility in that case.
Yes, so along the frontage of this property, it would be the property, well, it's different, it's not.
On the Cambridge Street side, it would be the property owner's responsibility and on Chestnut, it would be the town's responsibility?
That's how I would recommend.
Okay.
Phrasing it.
Wouldn't it depend on where the lights actually were? If they were on the state property, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the state wouldn't just as a brick banning, the state's not gonna maintain them.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so you're talking about the ones on 3A and Chestnut, that Chestnut would be our.
Chestnut sounds like, how many li- are there lights there now and would we, you know, so just, would it be replacing those lights?
Looked, it was only one big streetlight, right?
Yeah, it was one big street.
It was only one large streetlight.
And it's really not accommodative, you know, for walkway.
A shelter.
Yeah, and it wasn't a shelter.
Near the bus. And, you know, those types of things, so it's not only, I think, you know, aesthetically it would be nice, I think for practical purposes, in reality, is you would, you really should have some lighting along that walkway. Um, and then I guess out on Cambridge Street, if it was, if they were set in, in further, you're gonna have the walkway, you're gonna have the brick banding, and then you're gonna have those, they would, they would probably be on the private property, right?
Again, at building 19, which is the most recent one, they're specifically right outside of the right-of-way, so they're in private property.
Right.
The developer has a requirement to pay the electricity for those lights.
Yep.
They're on his property, so, um, that's a different story than running something down Chestnut.
So the Chestnut, we would deal with from the town's side, that would be our issue, but along Cambridge Street, that, that could be, they could be set onto private property over there so that you would maintain, yeah. But I think in any event, I really do think that, that you need some sufficient lighting on a walkway. If you're gonna put a walkway there, you're gonna have some lighting along the walkway because there's only one, like you said, there's only one street light there and it shines on a one location, and then you're gonna have a walkway that spreads the whole length of the, of the street.
And it's pretty far away from the bus stop, that light.
It's far away from, you know, and you're just, you know, you're inviting problems if you don't have lighting down that area, so I think, you know, this would be the opportunity to get some lighting and it would, it would actually add to the aesthetics of the whole, the whole area as well, I think. And it's, you know, it's not street lighting, so it's not gonna be going into people's, people's windows, it's, you know, it's gonna be nice antique lighting along the, along the walkway, so.
I think it's, it's, it's sort of a new proposal to us, so, I mean, I think we're amenable to exploring it, if it's possible to do it along our property and not have to deal with, again, MassDOT on something like that.
Yes.
And then, I mean, we don't know the cost of it, so I mean, we're adding a lot to a fairly modest project, I would say. So I, I hope we can be kind of flexible about committing to it, I mean, we're, we're committing to explore it and do it if we can. We don't want, again, the state entanglement with Mass DOT liability with them and things like that, um, so I don't know how to really.
Well, you know, the problem. The problem, Bill, is that, you know, we're now putting a walkway, we're inviting people to walk on a walkway, right, from a bus stop along a walkway. I'm not comfortable doing that without having some kind of lighting down that walkway, you're gonna, walking in the dark down a walkway and, and it's now, you're putting your blessing on it by saying, here's, here's the walkway that's been installed, this is where you need to walk, but we're not gonna give you any light to walk on it.
Well, I mean, there's a sidewalk there now, I mean, we're just improving the sidewalk, right? We're rebuilding it, we're essentially where it is.
Yep.
So, I mean, there is one along Cambridge Street.
And from what we discussed in, in the pre-meeting, I'm not, we were not talking about a lot of lighting along Chestnut Ave, we were talking probably about two or three lamps, right?
Yeah, and Frank, what are they, how are they spaced out along the Chestnut?
Um, it, it varies, but typically it's about 100 feet. Now, over the years, they've cut back the light, so maybe now it's 72 to 400 feet. If you drive down Almero, which docked, but it used to be 10 years ago, and it saves money, um, you're gonna.
I mean, I would say 100.
I don't think there's a problem, certainly we're gonna have lighting along our frontage.
Right.
And we could, again, easily put that on our property.
Right.
And whatever the, the height, the typical lamps. I, I'm still concerned about going down Chestnut because I think you'd, to put a large, there's two houses on Almero, the end of Almero, to put a lamp on Almero, anywhere near them, that might cause issues. I don't think you're gonna shield a, a street light, to be honest. Um, and, um, I have not seen the town, I mean, you know, I don't know everything, my kids and wife will tell you that, um, but along, I haven't seen the town adopt as a public wa- light the smaller 10 and 12 or 15-foot-high poles. Um, so if you put the 20 or 30-foot poles in there, that might be an issue for other folks. This is something we'd have to talk with the town on, to be honest, um, so I don't know. We certainly could run power along that.
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's what the DPW comments are for, right? So, we, I mean, in other words, we never have to, when we review a site plan, we put the site plan forward as it's developed through the site plan process, and then DPW makes comments on it. So it's nothing out of the ordinary that if we put those there, that DPW would comment on them, I think that's really how you would address that.
A site plan's all about the site, I mean, we're talking about.
No, well, a site plan is, is site in the surrounding, right? I mean, a site plan, that's why we deal with surrounding, because we know there will be additional traffic and additional, what we need, we need to accommodate foot traffic when we add car traffic. So this is all part of accommodating the foot traffic. Right, I mean, I, it's, this is not, it's, we act like this is like we invent the wheel, this is what we do every single site plan we do.
Yes, and, and.
What's so difficult, what's so hard about this?
I do think we're talking about just two or three lamps.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking.
Along Chestnut, that you would not be responsible for maintaining, that would just be a, a one-time cost of installation.
I mean, because, and again, that, that's not a reason that because, you know, 100 years ago, they put a walkway and didn't have lighting for it, now we're addressing it under today's standards, and we would require lighting on a walkway these days.
So, I, I understand. So the request is to do what? Pay for?
And install.
Fixtures?
Pay for and install when you do the trees, when you do the walkway and you do the trees, to pay for and install the antique lighting along that stretch of Chestnut as well as in, you know, on the 3A side.
Right, in front of, I think there, I think you've already said that on, on your own property in the front, on the Cambridge Street side, you're not concerned about that. We're just talking now about the two or three lamps that would be set up along Chestnut, correct? Do we know how long that length of street is?
Frank would know.
Okay. Frank, do you know how long the length of street, street is from, say, the bus stop to Wilmington Road on Chestnut?
Probably about 600 feet is.
Oh, really?
My guess.
Yeah.
That's three lamps.
Three? Could do it with three lamps, it's not, we're not looking for multitudes.
Yeah, we, we just need to establish that before the construction goes, 'cause it's, it'd get more costly to do it afterwards, so I, I think we need to establish that now, get it agreed to, and if the town can.
I mean, if, yeah, I.
If, if DPW or the town says they're not gonna do it, well then, they don't put them in, but if.
Yes, so it would, it would be subject to DPW's agreement. All right, let's, um, move on from that for just a minute, I did, we didn't even give staff a chance to weigh in on this.
No, no, that's okay, I'm just trying to.
I know there were some things you wanted to call out to the public that this applicant is doing that's of benefit to the neighborhood, and we haven't even gotten to that yet.
Um, okay, I'll clarify what you just discussed in a minute. Um, so through this process, I just wanted to highlight kind of what the applicant has agreed to so far, um, and kinda, and also that, just highlight a little bit of the changes. If, if you remember, this project started, can you, Frank, can you go to the, the other plan?
I actually, you want a site plan?
Uh, landscape's fine.
Okay, okay.
It's prettier. Uh, anyway, um, if you remember how this project started, that they had the Easterly Drive was all in, and it was one way going into the site this way, and so therefore 100% of the, and I'm sure Sam Ophiato will get to this point, but, um, 100% of the traffic had to take a, if you wanted to go south, had to take that left from the south. Um, so, and, and looking at, and they couldn't go through Chestnut 'cause there's a do not enter there. Um, so that was a concern just from us in terms of the loud, dangerous left-turn movements. Um, the second thing was that I know some of the neighbors are concerned about cut-through on Chestnut from, the people from Wilmington looking to go north on Billerica, which, you know, we're not gonna do not enter on both sides, so looking at it, what's the safest movement from people off, in and out of this site? And therefore, we had discussed moving in and they had proposed the new circulation pattern to allow for people who wanted to go south come out, um, along the east side of the building, coming out only with the, so do not enter, but coming out, and then traveling along Chestnut. And we said, well, you know, there are, there's, there was clearly traffic from this site when it was in use before, but with this use moving in, so, you know, we're not gonna change anybody from, traveling from Wilmington to go north in Billerica, but how do we make Chestnut as safe as we can make it? Um, and that's kind of where we got to the discussion about the sidewalk going all the way to Wilmington Road. So I think that's a, a key piece, and it's a long piece, as mentioned, it's 600 feet from the bus stop, 'cause it's, Frank, how many feet in front of the site?
Probably another 250, 300, probably 200, 250 feet.
All the way to 336, so?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, you're looking at 1,000 feet of, or just under 1,000 feet of sidewalk, um, to build from the site, which is terrific, um, and really connects the network and does what we've all been trying to do for.
Well, it does.
Years and years and trying to connect, you know.
Addresses a safety issue.
Sidewalk issues and safety issues in the neighborhood, so I think that's, that's very good. Um, the second piece was the discussion about the sculpture park, um, whether they put something onsite here or, um, submit a donation, they've committed to a $5,000 sculpture park donation. Um, we also talked about the bus stop and they, and the new, and to provide a new bus stop like the one at the district and Northwest Park, um, and soon Leahy, I just got a call today that it's been ordered and it should be installed by summer, so we'll have these nice new bus stops, um, and a new one here. They've committed to paying for that and getting it installed. Um, they also, there's a foundation wall that's in the back of this building, if you recall, this building is the, there's a top of the site with the parking and then the, the other side is significantly further down, so you're gonna see some exposed foundation, they, they're putting real brick along that foundation, um, so the neighbors, um, don't have to just look at a, an empty, or a, kind of concrete foundation wall.
Didn't they elevate that part of the parking lot?
They've elevated a little bit, so it's less than it was, but it's still, you could, it's still exposed. Um, they've added the arborvitae plantings along the Murray residential property, and then in discussion about the parking, they're reserving 14, 14 spaces?
14 spaces, yes.
14 spaces held in reserve, um, at this point in time. I will note, we did add a condition and a special permit, um, for those spaces and took some cues from some of the previous reserved space conditions as well as, kind of specific to this applicant, look at, we're, um, we're looking for some data points. So in the special permit condition C, um, we just note that there's 71 spaces to be constructed, 14 will be placed in a land bank for potential future use. Um, the parking spaces along the rear of the main parking area and spaces in the adjacent northerly parking area should mark to reserve. These spaces shall be kept in reserve for at least a year from the date of issuance of final occupancy permit. The second piece is the applicant shall admit, um, oh, so construction of the 14 land bank spaces will only be permitted after the following has been submitted, reviewed and approved by the planning director. So the second piece is they need to submit a report detailing for at least a month's stretch of time how the site has been overburdened, including staffing, appointment and visitor data. Photos and weekly logs are also suggested to understand the concern. And, um, the last piece is that they should submit data on the traffic demand management measures that have been implemented for employees to reduce trips and parking need, just to ensure that, you know, they've, they've certainly looked at all the options, but, um, still need the greater amount of parking. And I think for, we don't wanna make it difficult to build out if it's creating a problem for the site and especially, absolutely, the neighborhood, um, so, but we wanna make sure it's not just, hey, can I have these? So it's just some, to submit some data points that get us to the, the need for those spaces. Um, I think, I think that's it? I mean, we've talked a lot and I think it's been illuminating since we know a little bit more about the use.
Yes.
Illuminating just in general about some of these question marks that you kind of just spin until you kind of figure out a little bit more, um, about the actual use of the site, so that's been really helpful, and I think we at least feel a lot more comfortable about, um, the use, operation, circulation, times, people coming and going, um, of this building. And also, the trip generation for government office as used in their traffic report, um, is actually greater than if it was a general office, so if it ever converted to a, just a typical office use, um, we would expect the trips generation actually go down, so you're looking at kind of the ma- uh, for an office use, some more heavily used office use in this situation than if it was, you know, if, if this potentially government user vacated and it became general office, so. Um, I think that's all, if you have questions, thank you.
Thank you, um, Joe, I said, we have some new department comments.
Yep, so there, there are the existing ones from Building Inspector that was from February 13th, DPW. February thirteenth. DPW Engineering was, was from two twenty-nine. So we probably want to, obviously the new things we talked about will impact DPW somewhat. We, we want to get some new comments on that just to make sure that that's sufficient.
They have been in the loop.
Okay. Uh, well, I know there was some discussion with the lighting and things like that that-
Oh, absolutely. I thought you meant the drainage piece, but the lighting, absolutely.
Right. Fire Department was again from February nineteenth. I assume you have all of those. Those have all been, already been incorporated into public record, into, into the, uh, their public hearing. Border Health, there is a new comment, uh, there are new comments, uh, from the twenty-fourth of April. And again, there are the standard Border Health comments. I can read them. They're about three, two, two or three pages. But I assume Frank and Bill have those, right?
Yeah.
Yes, there's David's comments.
They dated April twenty-fourth from, okay, so those will be obviously incorporated into public record and into the hearing. Uh, and then we have the Conservation Commission, which is a, uh, well, there was a four seventeen and then a five-one comment. So do you have that new comment from the Conservation?
We do. So we are scheduled, uh, just again for the record and people watching home, we're scheduled to go before the Conservation Commission next, um, Thursday, May ninth. I think around seven thirty or seven forty on their agenda, somewhere in that range.
Okay. So you have that and, and I don't need to read that at this point?
Yes, we'll read that.
And that's incorporated into the public record as well. Um, one thing I do want to stress and I, I always get concerned when we have a demolition of this size, you know, it's an old, it's a, a pretty large scale and it's very close to residential properties and to businesses and things like that. I just want to stress that, that when demolition takes place, that the dust control, that it gets wet down sufficiently that there will be no dust that infiltrates any of the neighbors' yards or houses or anything like that. So I think extra precautions and I, they should always be taking precautions, but in a case where you've got neighbors that close and is that large scale of a demolition, we want to make sure that that's done sufficiently.
Um, Ernie, did you have any questions or comments?
I did have a, a couple of questions for Frank. Uh, the, in, in listening to the neighbors and reading their, uh, comments, obviously one of the biggest concerns is for, especially for the director butters, uh, not direct, but for the people, uh, at the beginning of Alma Road, has been, uh, water. And I, so I had two questions. Number one, the roof drains. Where do they end up, Frank? Do they end up in the, in the detention structure?
So, yes. Um, I'll use this point. So one concern that Conservation Commission had was, um, they didn't want us to direct all the runoff from the site into the infiltration system because there was a concern they might dry out the wetlands. So what we've done, we've basically got this area of the site, that is the pavement from here down this side, a little portion of this side that is treated, goes through a water quality unit, goes through a wat, you know, a catch bay with a deep stump in a hood, a water quality and then is directly discharged. That reduces the flow from existing conditions from that area by about fifty percent. So we are getting water into the, um, wetlands area to keep it wet. The rest of the site, the building, all the area over in here, with the exception of this area, we'll get back to, everything goes into the underground infiltration system, goes into the ground. We've even sized it for this area as well for the future. Uh, as I noted before, this area has its own infiltration system, but we've made the assumption that no water goes in here. So we've sized the system to say all this water gets there. Even though we get water going into the ground, about half the runoff from this entire area goes into the ground. So it is delayed because it's detained in the underground infiltration system. So you've got the direct runoff from this area that gets in, keeps the wetland wet. Over time, ten, twelve hours later, this water gets in and then about half the runoff from the site is infiltrated into the ground. And over the course of days or whatever, the water falls in and keeps the wetland wet. So from the standpoint of a, the first flush of a storm, when the runoff goes in there, there'll be less direct runoff into that wetland. Now, the water still will get there eventually over time. And if you got a week of rain, it's not going to help things in that area. The water will, will get into that. But in fact, we have reduced the peak flows from the volume of the site and the volume has not increased because this water goes into the ground.
Okay. Uh, that kind of answers my second question. I, I'll ask it anyways and you, it can, is it, so you have the, uh, the main infiltration and detention structure. Uh, and you just, I think you just said, if I heard you correctly, that it is already larger than what you really need? Is that correct? Or my-
Yes, so-
My question was, can you make it larger? But if it's already larger, then, okay.
It is, so we have sized it for, right now it will be built so it could pick all this flow and it assumes there's no infiltration in this area here, even though we have an infiltration system. So it is conservatively large. It's to handle up to a hundred-year storm. So typically drainage is on a twenty-five-year storm. So again, sort of what we've tried to balance is getting enough water in there to keep the wetlands wet immediately and over the first day or two, and then sustaining that wetland over time by the water seeping through the ground and coming into that area.
Okay. And the Conservation wants to make sure they keep the wetlands wet, right?
There was, there was a little bit of a, um, disagreement between some members of the commission. So I'll find out, I can tell you after next Thursday how that goes.
Uh, what, what I'm getting at, so if the neighbors are concerned about keeping the wetlands wet, they should probably go to the next Conservation meeting, right?
Yes, yeah. May ninth, seven forty or something like that, I think.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Good. Thank you, Ernie. Bill?
Yes, uh, thank you, ma'am, chair. I was going to, uh, wait to hear about the traffic. I had the concern last time, uh, with the traffic coming out, which validated my concerns based on the, uh, the, the building and the, who's going to be moving in there. So when we talked about taking the left on Cambridge Street, we said they're going to learn pretty quick that they can't do that, so they're going to go back around. So that means all of that traffic is now going to come back around and go up Chestnut. So that, that wasn't, uh, evaluated in the initial report. So we're talking more, more traffic up Chestnut than we decided. Um, and my, my only second point, which I'm not sure there's going to be an answer to, but maybe to refer to Ernie. Um, so when we usually see this, these type of redevelopments, for the five years I've been on the board, we've consistently looked to reduce the impervious surface. Uh, and hearing the neighbors, you know, I think their preference would be to keep the wetlands drier than it currently is today. We are adding a half an acre of impervious surface and what I heard subsequently is, hey, the water's going to be what the water is. You're not going to gain water, but you're not going to lose water. It's just we're going to save it and it's going to go in there a little bit slower. And so for the folks that live behind there, um, you would think that, uh, with a project like this, that you would look to reduce that water going into the neighbors' backyards, which has increased over time. So it, it's just kind of a first for me that we've got, we're adding on half acre of impervious surface. We're not reducing the water that's going into the neighborhood in the back and, uh, and I'll wait to hear on the traffic. And I, I just get a caution with kind of local traffic and Frank, you're from around here. When you head out of Chestnut on a night, right, on an evening commute, everybody that's coming up sixty-two heading north to Wilmington is coming off of Cambridge Street north, right, or they're taking the left up. So all that traffic is a right hand. You can take a right hand only. There's no, you don't have to stop there. That traffic goes all the way back past my house, back to the center of town. So that's a continuous stream. When you get traffic going up there, that's, that's a continuous stream of traffic heading north. There's no brakes in that traffic. So there's no opportunity for anybody to come out of Chestnut to try to not only take the left with the first lane that's heading towards, uh, Cambridge Street, but trying to jump over and trying to get into that traffic. So, uh, whatever you're going to show me there, I'm not sure it's going to be reflective of what the current traffic practice is over there. So I'll be very concerned about even people not being able to leave the site. Okay?
Um, Sam lives in Billerica on the other side of town from where I live. He is very familiar with this area as well. So I'll let him address that.
Okay.
Just to sort of touch on the drainage, um, when the rain falls, there's a certain volume collected, whether it was impervious or not, that volume comes down. What we're really doing is modifying what the direct runoff is into the wetland area. So even though if seven inches falls on the site, um, it all gets into the wetland eventually right now. What we're, and what we're doing is the peak flows that get into the backyards to flood the neighbors, we're reducing those flows anywhere from thirty to fifty percent of what they are right now. That difference is made up by putting the water into the ground directly. Uh, and so that's the delay. We're holding it in the infiltration detention area and then what doesn't go into the ground, we're releasing slowly into the wetland area after the fact. So, um, if there was a bathtub at the other end of Alma Road or something like that and the water couldn't get out, that volume's still going to be there. The idea with our infiltrating into the ground, and we've done this other locations, if you think of Building Nineteen, uh, we actually reduced the impervious area by a little bit, but we ended up having sixty to seventy percent of that volume go into the ground and not go out into Cambridge Street. So we had the same volume putting into the ground. It eventually gets down to, I think it's Little's Brook if I'm not mistaken, behind, um, uh, the Shaw's Building. It would get there eventually, but it doesn't get there during the peak periods. And that's sort of the, the push when you look at the peak volumes and you look at the, the volume of water running off. The other item, that little triangular area in front, that's going into the ground. So it's not, yeah, there may be some overflow, but most of that goes into the ground. That increase in runoff we talked about the last time has been eliminated. Uh, and we, we got to maintain that system over time and we'll do that. That's part of the O and M after construction for that system. There's periodic reporting to the town on that. So I am fairly confident that there'll be checks and balances to make sure the maintenance is done on the site. I don't know if that addresses your drainage comments.
Well, again, I, I think kind of, kind of where I step up a little bit here, that the, the idea is to alleviate the flooding which is going on with the backyard of the neighbors and reduce traffic. And, and this, this particular project does neither of those. You said it's keeping the, you know, the water, still going to get there, the same amount of water, maybe a little later on with the-
The flooding though is based upon when the peak flows get to the area. So if you reduce the peak flows, you will reduce the flooding at that given time.
Yeah, the water stays, the, the volume stays the same.
Right, the volume, whatever, the volume's going to stay the same.
There's no mitigation of, of that to the neighborhood. Like we mostly, sometimes we see that, and I know there was a, a question of the water that currently is going onto Cambridge Street, that you have, you can't put that there because the state won't allow. So you have to kind of mitigate that on site. So I know there was an issue of excessive water that wasn't there before that was going off of Cambridge Street.
Right. And so the water that goes off of Cambridge, that little triangle goes into the ground. It won't go onto Cambridge Street. It really, it might take days before it gets back to the wetland or maybe it flows in the other direction. That's actually at a drainage divide, that portion of town is between two, two rivers. Um, so I think that flow does not get to the back. That was a concern the last time. They were worried about, we're increasing the amount of water getting to the back. We're not increasing the water getting to, it's going into the ground now. Um, and then the issue is really how fast does the surface water get there? And then what is the water that flows through the ground? And the water flowing through the ground takes a lot longer than the surface water getting into that wetland.
Yeah.
So if everything gets there at the same time, that's a flood. If you can reduce that peak flow, which is required to do under the town wetlands and the, the drainage bylaws and the State Wetland Protection Act and the DEP Stormwater Stand, so the peak flows have not been increased, but we're putting more water into the ground. And that, yeah, over time, the same water gets into the wetland and that's the difference. It's not flooding this high, it might be flooding this high. The water still gets there, it's still wet over time. Uh, and then in summertime, you're actually getting the water go into the ground, not being evaporated. So.
Frank, do you-
We'll go traffic now and I'm going to-
Frank, hang on. I wanted, I wanted you to, I, because I don't know if you were still there, Mr. Gaffney, but I think it was Susan Luminallo made a good point that, because we're improving the, the removal of the suspended solids, the wetland should function better, which will be able to absorb more water. Because that's their real function is to absorb water and present, prevent it from flowing, sheet flowing. So I thought that was a good observation that she made.
Sure. Good, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sam Affead, the BSC group. Uh, I think I heard, um, made a comment, um, from Mr. Gaffney that, um, about traffic on Chestnut and at Cambridge. And I just wanted to, before I talk about this graph, what the, um, what is being generated by the site, I think we have to look at what exists today in terms of the counts that we took. Um, I did a section of Chestnut and, um, Cambridge and a county road. We actually did count in the morning, we had ten vehicles on Chestnut making a left onto Cambridge Street and eighteen going through to County Road. Uh, and then in the evening, we had ten making the left, um, onto, from Chestnut onto Cambridge Street and seven going through. So it is true that you have traffic on Cambridge Street, but making a left turn there is not impossible.
Okay. Yeah, I think it, it is, okay. So what my concern is, is that in the evening, when you have everybody leaving at the same time, everybody's going to go, they, they can't take the left because the traffic's all backed up on Cambridge Street. So you've got to go back up Chestnut. All right? So now you're going to take a chest, back up Chestnut. Everybody heads north up sixty-two to Wilmington. So you, but you can't get there because all the traffic's getting up there. So, you know, my experience is, let's say if I want on Pine Glen Way or Cutting, um, with the, the traffic coming off of sixty-two, Cambridge Street to sixty-two, I could be waiting there and, and this is just one car and I could take a right. Try to take even a right there. You, this, this just, this continual traffic. So with that traffic coming up sixty-two, there's no outlet for traffic to come out of Chestnut. Because first of all, you have to cut over the first lane heading south on sixty-two and then the continuous traffic with everybody heading north from three A up to sixty-two to go north. Because that's, you know, it's either you're going three A north or you're going sixty-two north. Nobody's going south. So you're in continuous traffic. You're just, you're just going to be staying there. So the traffic, there's nobody leaving the site for, you know, what, fifteen, twenty minutes?
Well, I, I think in the evening we did count about twenty-five vehicles making the right from Chestnut onto, uh, sixty-two and nineteen taking the left. So, uh, we did-
Twenty-five heading right on sixty-two south and then nineteen heading left?
Yeah, making left, yeah. So we did count that, uh, under the existing condition. So what we are adding, so back to this, if you look at the, the site and what we are proposing to generate, and I think it was said earlier, that that analysis, the trip generation was based on a government office, um, trip generation land use, which, I, if you look at it on a daily basis, it's about twice as many trips as a general office. And it is based on, um, the full twenty-one thousand five hundred square foot office building. So if, uh, based on what we're being told, how the office actually operates with a thirty-five percent reduction, uh, every single day and then ten percent on vacation. So it's really, um, this could be seen on the higher side. And just to, uh, point out, I mean, as, as you can see, so what, uh, based on the trip generation analysis, now we are saying that in the morning, uh, so let me just show what is, so the blue is showing, uh, vehicles exiting the site and the red, uh, vehicles entering the site. And then we also showed a PM in parentheses. So in the morning, now what we are saying is that you're going to have, um, well, as you also explained, based on the circulation, you cannot enter the site from Chestnut. So you have, everybody's entering on Cambridge Street. So you have, um, everybody coming in. And then in the, um, when they have to exit, you do have some, um, so in the morning about eight vehicles that will make the left. That is over the course of one hour. Uh, then you also have twelve in the evening, uh, taking that left over the course of one hour. And I, and as somebody you say about this location, Chestnut at Wilmington Road, and it's with respect to, so we've already analyzed how this location would be. So whatever we presented in our analysis, it shows that it wouldn't change the level of service. There could be a little delay, but it is not anything unusual from what is happening. So if you talk about twelve vehicles, so you're talking about, um, two, even two vehicles every, uh, three minutes. So it is not, um, that kind of, um, heavy, uh, generator here. And I think you also made a statement that- And I think you also made a statement that everybody leaves at once. Well, these are the numbers based on counts done at different offices across the country, and these are the numbers that were generated.
Across the country, you said?
Yes.
Okay. So, my information is from a state employee that says everybody's, everybody's out the door at once.
Well, it's still a government office. I mean, I don't know if, under character, it's a government of workers-
Just tell you the reality of a similar state office employee, they will tell you that, that's how it works. They don't, it's not like industry where, you know, where I work, people are, you know, all hours, all nights, all day, you know, it's not that type of environment. It's different, like you said. And they tend to kinda close it off. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's like the Flintstones. When the whistle blows, everybody's out of there.
Earlier if they can.
Now, I just wanna make a note, I don't think that's a fair, I think this office doesn't really work that way. There's a lot of technology now. People are working from home, they're on the field. And even the people that are there, the professionals, they really don't leave, arrive or leave at the same time. So, the arrivals are now between seven and ten at this office typically and leaving between four and six from the office. So, it's a little bit different than the traditional, and I know what you're saying. I used to work for the MBTA for many years.
Okay, thank you.
But this is a little bit of a different professional group of people in this case, and they have fieldwork, so they have a lot of folks outside of the office they have to manage and deal with and meet with. So, I think it's a little different than that, honestly.
The most dangerous place to be is right outside an elevator at five oh one PM in a government building. I can tell you, I've been there, so I completely understand what you're saying. The door opens and it's a flood of people coming out. It's more efficient than a fire drill. So, I get it, I understand. That's why we made a point to highlight how this particular office works with the flexible hours. They have iPads, LTE connectivity, so they have, this is totally different operation.
Thank you. Joe, did you have more comments?
Not yet.
Okay.
Just one thought, minor, but if you look down Wilmington Road to the very bottom, you can see it crosses a little triangle there and some cars parked there. And if you really had a problem with parking on the site, that's used as a commuter lot by many people, that's Presbyterian Church.
Oh.
It's not that corner across the way?
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah. I thought somebody said no.
Yep.
Oh, that's yes.
Someone said oh.
Oh, I was gonna say, if you said no, I was gonna stand in defense. No, but there's a possibility, I know that they said at the Human Services Building, for instance, they have the buses and so forth, and there's the Church of the Open Bible or whatever next door, and they said they allow them to put the buses there sometimes when things are busy and so forth. And you might even, if it was necessary, make agreement with the church to have certain spaces available to you for a small fee probably. Just a thought.
Hopefully it won't be necessary.
It's been worked over pretty much the rest of it.
Jack?
Yeah, the one part that we didn't address is the conference rooms. To me, most of those conference rooms are going to involve at least some non-employees in the meetings. And there is, according to my notes, nine of them. That to me is an issue of how many meetings they might potentially have involving outside people. Now, whether they overdesigned or overindicated, like they, like you say, they did for the desks and the stations, I don't know. I just do know that these outside meetings, or these meetings that involve outside people, there are at times several meetings going at once, and I can foresee as many as twenty non-employees showing up on some of those days. Now, whether there are, you know, once a month or something that all employees have to be there for a meeting, and I'm sure they'd have sense enough not to schedule these things at that time, I just don't know the mix of spaces. You say this is the Cambridge office, I went there many a time and couldn't find a parking space. I hope you've got more generous spaces here than they did. And I and others, you know, parked in neighboring streets, so we even parked in an adjacent supermarket and hoped we didn't get tagged. I'm just hoping that the proposed tenant has done their homework and is not overly optimistic in the spaces that they require and that they actually can function with those spaces. Because if they can't, there's gonna be a problem and it's gonna hurt them more than anyone else.
So, if I can respond to that, I asked someone at that agency, what are the odds, 'cause I had the same question, what are the odds? How often do you have an all hands on deck meeting, everybody has to show up? And the response that I got was maybe, 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 maybe once a year, but probably not even that.
For the Christmas party, probably.
Perhaps.
Yeah, I know, even when they want all hands on deck, you know, somebody's stuck in court. And in the evening, I do know some of them would not wait and leave at four thirty, five o'clock. They might leave the building at three o'clock because they have to go at a visitation that involves children after school. So, I'm not terribly worried about that. I just hope they've done their homework. I know when I used to go into that Cambridge office, they had sort of a magnetic strip so the receptionist or the telephone operator could tell who was in the building. Hopefully now it's done electronically and they have some record of what their average occupancy is and they've based it on that. I'm hoping. I have no problem with, you know, what goes on in the building. I just wanna make sure that how they function does not cause a problem for the neighbors and hopefully they've given you accurate information as how they function.
Thank you. I can answer that a little bit, too. Sometimes, even though one, it's essentially one meeting, but they'll separate the participants in different conference rooms, if you're following along. So, there may be three visitors in one appointment, but they'll be sitting in different spaces for various reasons, to interview people separately. So, it doesn't mean each conference room is gonna be packed with a different group of people. That was one of the other sort of kind of slants on our color that they added to it. And again, I don't know that that nine or ten conference rooms is gonna be what the layout is. Again, we just laid it out based on the hundred and one and what would be needed to support that maximum kind of employee-
Did you misspeak and say the hundred and one? You meant eighty-five or seventy-one or?
Well, the-
The rendering shows a hundred and one, they're not intending to have that many.
Yeah, the cubicles, right.
I do know some of those meetings that if they involve outside people, of which I was one, and if the previous one was late, everyone's there for the next one, and so there's a double the number of people for an overlap of ten or fifteen minutes. I'm just hoping that they have taken all of that into consideration and they're not going to cause a problem for the neighbors because we just won't allow you to do that.
Yeah, I don't think their intention is to move into a space that would be inadequate for them and cause any interference with the neighbors.
Yeah, well, their employees don't like it either.
All right, thank you, Jack. My turn. First of all, I would like to take a minute to thank this applicant because I think that this process has gone very well, and I wanna recognize the generosity of this applicant in terms of putting in the sidewalk all along Chestnut, which I think is an enormous benefit to the neighborhood, and I think that's very important. And I think that you've worked very well with our staff and I wanted to compliment you on that. I also wanted to mention, we received several emails from residents in the area, and I wanted to thank you for going through the effort to get permission to share with us who your tenant is, because that went a very long way to calming people's fears. So, I appreciate that. We specifically received an email just today from Sean Griffin, and I'm only gonna read a small portion of it, but it was so unusual that we got a complimentary email that I had to share it. It's to the planning office and it says, "With the developer agreeing to conditions of a sidewalk, improvements to the water mitigation and communicating that this will be a DCF facility. All of the neighbors I've spoken with that previously had concerns fully back the development of this site." So, it's wonderful to hear that the neighbors are pleased and that your work and our work is making a difference for them. I did have one question. Would it be possible to see a rendering of what this building would look like? I understand that we do not have design review, but that does not mean we are not curious and we would love to see what you have planned.
I don't know if it's ready yet. I think he might be able to describe what he's working on.
I could if you like.
I would love that, thank you. The style of the building, colors, whatever you can share. And then when you do have a rendering, if you could share it with staff and they would share it with us, that would be great.
Jerry Sealan, Roth and Sealan Architects. Basically, it is an office building. Our thought for the materials right now is it'll be primarily brick. The fenestration, the windows will be individual windows rather than continuous ribbon windows. So, I won't say that it's a historical looking building, but I think that, I think you'll find it'll be complimentary to the brick architecture that you see here in town. Again, not historical like your buildings here, but I'm currently thinking probably more of a red brick sort of a building. It'll probably have some kind of architectural panelization to add a little bit of accent at the entrances as well.
Kind of roof?
Pardon me?
What kind of roof?
It'll be a flat roof.
Flat roof?
Yes. So, it's rather, it's a rather large building to put any kind of peek on it. And frankly, I think from the neighborhood's perspective, the profile of it will in fact be lower than the building that's currently there. So, in terms of people from Alma Road, for example, being able to see it kind of on the horizon, it should have somewhat less impact than the current building does, just in terms of the height.
Will there be utilities on the roof?
Yeah. Beg your pardon?
Will there be utilities on the roof?
If there are, there will definitely be some utilities, but they'll be completely screened. So, no one will see any machines up there or-
They'll be depressed in or how will they be screened?
Probably some sort of architectural enclosure that might add a little bit of, again, three dimensionality to it. But it will be limited to a small, as small a footprint on the roof as we can. I'm a big fan of concealing equipment. I hate to do a nice job on a building only to have a big gray-green machine up there.
We hate that, too. So, could we put that in the conditions that anything on the roof would have to be screened? Thank you.
Can I interject? I'm just, you know, I know, it sounds like you haven't finalized the actual product yet, or is that, like, is that, is that an absolute given that you have to have a flat roof, that you can't do a peaked roof on this thing? Where we're coming from, historic site, you know, historic building and, you know, it would be nice to have a peaked roof on it, but it also would be nice to have all of those mechanicals inside a roof, inside of an attic versus outside. Noise purposes for, you know, visual purposes and it would just create such a nicer look to have a peaked roof and-
I appreciate your concern. I appreciate your concern and I would just point out that the building is a hundred feet wide. And if you can imagine peaked roofs on a hundred-foot wide building with a slope that's attractive like some of your buildings here, the peak of that roof would be extremely tall. So, the geometry of a building like this doesn't really lend itself to a peaked roof. Again, I think you used to see mansard roofs on commercial strip buildings to try to give that image of a historic look. Personally, again, I found, I've always found those rather unsuccessful. They look, they just look out of place and out of scale. Our goal would be to do a very nice job with the facade of the building so that it feels like it's kinda got a bottom, middle and a top like any classical building would have. But I think that the footprint itself is just frankly too large to accommodate a sloping roof. We'll certainly design any sort of screening that we do for the rooftop equipment in a way that complements the building and adds some three dimensionality to it. But I think that it would probably be nicer to not emphasize the height of the building so much in terms of scale relative to the adjacent, both commercial and residential buildings. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. We'd be happy, once we are released, to proceed with our design, we'd be happy to come back and show you guys what we're thinking of.
I think we would like to see it. All right, I know there are members of the audience that are neighbors and I'd like to invite anyone who'd like to speak on this matter to come forward. Please, sir.
This is a facility that helps kids, abused kids and families and someone like that. Is that true?
It does a lot of things.
It's the Department of Children and Families, so they deal with a lot of things, but it is for children and families in state.
I bet it on the website, that's basically.
It's with adoption, it deals with foster and court.
Well, the reason I bring it up, it's to take care of children from small, abused. So, anything that helps abused kids, everybody in the neighborhood. Why that wasn't brought up in the beginning? Because when you tell, oh, it's from a government assisted facility, we can't tell you the name of it nor anything else. That upsets a lot of people, because then you don't know what's coming into the neighborhood. But this is a positive thing. As far as the sidewalk goes, I'm absolutely thrilled with that, because it's something we really desperately need. My mind is just half here and half there. Oh, yes. I'm kinda surprised that the sidewalk is going down on the side that abuts my property. But I might be able to save you some money on that. I've been burning wood since the first oil embargo, mainly because I got tired of sitting in line for the gas and all the rest of the, you know, prices went right through the roof. If you wanna drop the wood trees in the backyard, I'd be thrilled. Besides, I'm a stubborn son of a honey ever lived in life. I will find a way to do things.
Okay, I believe you.
We've learned that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One thing we did, yes, please come forward. As you're making your way forward, one thing we did talk about in our pre-meeting is if there is any way to save those trees, even if the sidewalk is only three feet in a couple of areas, if there's any way to save those larger trees, we would like you to try. We know we can't, you can't promise that now, but we'd like that to be a goal. Thank you. Yes, please.
Evelyn Trevette to Alma Road. I'm a little confused about something. Maybe you can clarify it for me.
You can hold it, too.
Hold it. Okay. When I look out my kitchen window from our home we've lived in for forty years, I can see the two curb cuts of this site. Now, are you going to retain those two same curb cuts?
Can you point on the drawing to where, which curb cut you're talking about?
Right, you wanna show?
Two thirty, Cambridge Street. There are two of them and-
Oh, on Cambridge Street.
One comes out onto, presently comes out onto Chestnut Avenue. One comes out onto, presently comes out onto Chestnut Avenue, the other one comes out onto-
Yes. Yes, those are staying. Yes. Yes, those are staying.
Not exactly the way they are, but in the same general vicinity, the same elevations. Do we got to tie into Chestnut Ave?
Yeah. That was my question. I wanted to know that. You have to tie into Chestnut Avenue somehow, because you can't take a left coming out of there onto Cambridge Street and go up Chestnut Avenue going south, because there is a sign right at that intersection.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
It says, "Do not enter."
So what we would, what we've talked about earlier is, again, a concern, so this is, this curb cut is on Chestnut Ave, this is Cambridge Street, this curb cut will go onto Cambridge Street. So we've had discussion, what we're looking to do is people will come in this driveway, we'll be back up. There are six parking spaces there. So people will come in to this portion of our site, two ways in that driveway. There'll be a one-way sign, no one will go in this way. Everybody else will come into this side off of Cambridge Street. At the end of the day, people have the option of going right onto Cambridge, trying to go left, but because-
You can't go left.
Right, and so the, the, what we've talked about doing is, this is now a one-way out. So if you want to try going out to Cambridge Street in the middle of the day, you could do that. You could go this way. However, there will be a one-way going out, so you could take a left onto Chestnut-
Because they can go out onto Chestnut.
Right. You could take the right if you want to make, so these guys could take a right onto, so basically we're funneling the ties down to Chestnut Ave, because that's a simpler, more safer access to Cambridge Street if you're going south on Cambridge.
That was my concern, because if there are children going out of, in and out of that building, concerned with their safety as well as the children in our neighborhood.
What about sidewalks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I see no one.
One more question.
Yes, Ernie.
I was, I was just thinking of what Bill was saying and I've experienced the same thing, you know, come out the back side of La Cacha's, try and take a left onto Wilmington Road. And you can't do that because the traffic is backed up from the light in front of you and people have a free right-hand turn on the other lane. And I was wondering if we could either ask DPW or the applicant to put a "Do not block the intersection" sign.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We've never, I've seen it work. It really does work. I mean, especially on like Stewart Street in Boston. I have to go into Boston every month.
That's a great idea.
I think that's a good idea, Ernie.
They even paint a big X there and it makes, it makes it take notice.
Is that something?
I think that's a, well, put a bit.
I think it's a, it's a great idea. Is that something the DPW would do?
Um, Wilmington, Wilmington's a state road.
It already exists as a problem.
No, no, this is on Wilmington Road.
It seems like-
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, it's a state numbered road. We have to get permission to do it.
That is a state road too?
Well, I think we have to get permission. We shouldn't be a problem, but we-
I know we maintain it, I think.
Well, yeah, we maintain it. So even though it's a state numbered road, I think it's, it's maintained by Burlington. I think Cambridge is the only street that's not maintained. I think we could, I think we could do this effort.
Why don't we put in the condition that we'll work with the town to do that?
I don't know. I don't think we need, I don't think we necessarily need to have the applicant ask and put it in the decision.
Put it in the decision, yes.
I think we can certainly ask.
Yes.
As part of the overall improvements that the applicant is doing, if the town can enhance that by doing that, I think we can certainly ask that.
And also, because it's on a bus line, I, I know Bill was saying that, that most people are going to need their cars at least a couple of times a week, so, but there might be, the employees I under, are probably coming from the facility in Cambridge, correct? Or some of them are anyways? So they prob-
Although we outed them some probably, that was the answer to his question. They, that, they really concerned about that.
About people coming?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm trying to make it easier.
Yeah.
Is there any way somebody, either the tenant or the landlord, can subsidize MBTA passes? I don't even know, you know, I've been on the MBTs for so long, I don't, really don't know how long it's going to take to, because in, I'm sure in the permit, it says TDM measures, like transportation to management, demand, management measures, and that's one of them.
I think there's a, a state initiative to have, to encourage state employees to use public transportation. I think that already exists.
Do they actually help them pay for that public transportation?
I don't know that. I do not know that.
We do have a condition that they shall, shall implement transportation demand management initiatives and we include, you know, we include such as, but not limited to the following, kind of our traditional guaranteed ride home and, you know, making sure people are aware of all the different ways, ride matching, ride sharing, and some other ones that they can take a look at and choose from and if they already have a program, that's terrific. But, but anyway, it's in here for them to-
Just wanted to bring it up because-
Certainly take a look at implementing some, some initiatives to reduce generation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any additional comments? No?
Just the important announcement that it's, we're about halfway through the game and it's two to one Bruins.
Okay. So, um, you're meeting with, is it Concom? Next week? So our decision can be contingent upon-
It is.
All right.
So.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Close it.
On the special permit we're doing?
Items A and B?
No, close the public hearing.
On the special permit, we got to do-
It's going to be contingent upon what Concom-
As I am saying, leave for the first-
We're going to put Concom's comments in here.
Yeah. Okay, so.
We understand from Concom and Converse, they're really, they're, usually they're worried or if we're going to make site changes or if any, but based on a lot of the drainage comments that have been going back and forth with the Board of Health, we don't expect there to be site changes. If there are, which we don't expect, but if there are, they need to come back for a minor engineering change.
Okay. So based on those, their comments and based on DPW's with the other-
Based on the process thus far, we don't expect substantive site changes. So we should be able to accommodate anything they, they ask for.
So everything we discussed will be incorporated today, that, you know, we discussed, it will be as calm. Okay.
So I'm specifically looking for a motion to close the public hearing on-
On items A and B for the special permit, I move to be closed, a public hearing on the special permit, items A and B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
Make a motion, we-
Six.
Close the public hearing on item C, the site plan.
We got a vote on A and B.
Well, you can, you can close both of them.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the request of Iconic Capital LLC for special permits pursuant to section 7.2.6, increasing the maximum parking space requirements and section 4.4.1.11, discharge from man-made structures at the wetlands to the zoning bylaws at 328-330 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass. Subject to the terms and conditions contained Exhibit A as attached and as discussed and amended this evening.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Closed? Seven zero?
Six zero.
Oh, excuse me, six zero. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the request of Iconic Capital LLC applicant for approval of a site plan application for a property located at 328-330 Cambridge Street to permit the construction of a one-story, 21,500 plus or minus gross square foot office building with associated site and utility improvements, as reflected on a site plan entitled, Proposed Office Building 328-330 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass., prepared by BSC Group, dated January 23rd and revised to April 25th, 2019. That is the site plan. The project is subject to the following terms and revisions and conditions as amended and discussed this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Six zero. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And again, and that, we worked very closely with the board the last few weeks. Greatly appreciate it.
I look forward to presenting you with a product that you'll be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll bring us more applicants like this so we can get home early.
Frank, that wood, if you cut it, it's going to be an 18-foot length to fit into stove. 18-inch lengths. 18, 18-inch.
We will be modifying these specifications to try to make sure that they take care of the-
Fit his stove, right.
Get out your flannel shirt and jeans and go on.
Sometime I'll do that.
You're off. You're off to page 16.
16?
16.
16?
Page 16.
So the next item on our agenda is meeting minutes. Have the members had a chance to review the meeting minutes from February 21st and March 7th?
Yes.
I did. There was just one missing section. You took care of that?
It will be taken care of, yes.
I, I sent in one comment as well. Okay?
I just had a comment on March 7th. Yes. So it is absent, but I actually arrived at 7:10.
7:10. Oh, and it didn't reflect that you had ever come?
It said, it said I arrived at 7:10, but it still, it reflected I was absent in the-
Oh, okay.
It was in parentheses.
Okay.
It was actually says absent.
Okay.
It's not just the parentheses and then-
Sure, sure.
Oh, on the meeting minutes, okay. All right. So may I have a, a motion regarding meeting minutes?
You're doing both or one?
Um, both.
I have to abstain on seven because I wasn't here.
Then we'll take them separately. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of February 21st, 2019, as corrected.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, abstained. We have two abstentions. So we have one, two, three, four, zero, one, four, zero, two, because you're not voting. Okay?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2019, as corrected and amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Yes.
I'd just like to say a word, and I think Paul would agree with me in this case, that we're actually approving minutes from last month or two months ago? This is great.
Great job.
Are you kind of impressed? Are you kind of impressed?
We're very happy about that.
Thank you, well, thank you, Josh. By the time we were approving them, we'd forgotten.
All right. It's been moved and seconded.
I mean, it used to be a year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, did you, what did you do, Paul?
I abstained because I wasn't here March 7th.
Okay, so we have-
Aye.
Aye.
Four in favor.
Yeah.
No against, two abstentions. Um, okay. Matters for discussion.
All of the above, all of you can talk and vote.
We can what?
All of the mixed things. Yeah, I just want to let Mike know that.
Mike, wake up.
We can all talk and vote.
I'll discuss about this, these, okay? So 36 Mill Street, this is the, the item that was in front of us tonight.
Right.
So they just need an extension?
Yes.
They had one, they have one through June. They won't be done by June, so.
Seems reasonable? Is there any discussion on this? No? Okay.
Motion, the planning board agrees to extend the statutory time to complete the Mill Street definitive subdivision to June 2020. June, a certain date in June or just June? June 30th, 2020. As requested by the applicant in a letter dated February 19th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Seven zero. And then we have also an extension of time for 60 Blanchard Road.
That data con?
That's data con. Um, if you remember, they came forward, they were looking to potentially move out of their space this year. They have not. They, I guess they've had some contracts that they still needed to fulfill, that they needed to stay in their space longer than they, they thought. So they're still in there and working and obviously need an extension of time to do something else on the site.
Okay. Are there any questions or objections? No?
Motion, the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension of time from May 21st, 2019, to May 25th, 2020, to complete the required special permits and site plan improvements pertaining to parking lot layout changes in the new office building at 60 Blanchard Road, as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated April 19th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero.
That sounds, 2020 sounds rather futuristic.
That does, but it's not.
It used to.
Um, the next item is I, I asked Kristen to give us a summary about the-
Housing choice.
Housing choice legislation that was discussed and she, Kristen went to a meeting last week with the governor, correct?
Yep. The governor's office and- The governor, the lieutenant governor, the secretary of housing and community development. Um, I will note, the summary is in, oh, and many other people. And the mayor of Salem and a whole bunch of, it's in, under legal advisories, there's a summary in your books. Um, so the governor has submitted a housing bill, or a bill, housing, to promote housing choice, to find new, to find ways to promote housing production within the Commonwealth. In many communities that they have looked at over the last couple of years, well, they, they actually have a nice long presentation. I will say that they're, they've just started to do their kind of state round-wide tour. We are working with their office. I don't know if we're going to get the governor, but we're looking to get folks to come out to either a regional event through Middlesex 3 or another type of event or forum to discuss this bill, housing production, housing choice, and what it's all about. So that should be upcoming, so we should look, look out for that over the late spring and summer. Anyway, the, since the mid 90s, we've dramatically slowed housing development in the Commonwealth. Through the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, there was a lot of housing development and you can see it even here in Burlington, there was a big boom of housing development. In the mid 90s, many communities became more stringent in their zoning. And we just have slowed growth of housing production. They, they have taken, I, I think they've taken a pretty good approach versus some of the past approaches of kind of mandates or kind of these, you know, carrot, carrot-stick, but more stick approach where, and I think a lot of people can argue that 40B has been a little bit of a, more of a stick approach than a carrot approach to, for housing production. And I know since the 2001 amendment, where 40B kind of took off because of new, different financing methods that were available, that produced a lot of housing, but it produced a lot of kind of large multi-families, large-scale housing instead of a diversity of housing types. So what this bill looks at is, and it also looked at communities that really are trying to do the, do smart growth housing, housing in town centers, housing near transit, and failing to meet the two-thirds threshold at town meeting. So they're looking at it saying, okay, well, if people are, so there's six, six exemptions to 40A. So if you do these, is it six, one, two, three, four, the, I'll read them out. If you do these certain things, they're reducing forty A. So if you do a zoning amendment at town meeting, if you do these things, or things that fall under this type of housing production, you will only need a majority vote at town meeting. Um, and that includes reducing dimensional requirements such as minimum lot size to allow homes to be built closer together, reducing required parking ratios, um, for housing, creating mixed-use zoning in town centers, and creating multifamily and starting ho, starter home districts, near transit and other like town center, um, and smart growth locations, adopting natural resource protection zoning and open space residential development to allow for clustering of new developments while protecting open space and conserving land, adopting provisions for transfer of development rights which protects open space while creating more density in suitable locations, uh, adopting a forty R smart growth zoning district which provides incentives for dense mixed-use development in town centers near transit and other smart growth locations, allowing accessory dwelling units or in-law apartments, um, in existing homes, and allowing for increased density through a special permit process promoting more flexible development. So, um, what, um, if you are doing those things, then your threshold, um, would be a majority vote at town meeting, not a two-thirds. And it's.
Ask a question?
Yep.
If this passes, do towns, are towns required to adopt this, or could towns opt out and still require the two-thirds vote?
So it's a change to forty A. So no, it's not an opt-in, opt-out. It's a change to forty A. Um, so therefore forty A is the statute. Um, there are some questions that we've, we've had, just in terms of like, you know, who is it, who's determining what falls under what? Um, I mean, I think there's, you know, if you're adopting a forty R smart growth, you, it's black and white, you are, you aren't. Um, but some of the other more vague titles, just to try to, you know, figure out how, how this is going to roll forward. And the second piece is, um, the bill also includes provisions for communities that already allow transit-oriented multifamily and mixed-use projects by special permit. The bill reduces the two-thirds vote for special permit approval to simple majority on projects for, that have at least ten percent affordable housing. Um, this piece of it, I'm just still wondering about the mechanics of. So, so I have some questions here. But, but overall, it's, it's looking to amend the statute for zoning changes that are only under these sections, um, to promote housing development.
Those are pretty broad sections, though. And, and all of that, all of that would result in increased density, which is something through our, through our master plan process, we have heard time and time again from the residents of Burlington that they don't want increased density. And I think, I personally am, would, I mean, I know it's not my choice, but I would not be in favor of reducing the threshold to, to a simple majority for votes that impact the town for hundreds of years going forward. Once something like, some, once you change something like these, any of these things, you change any of these zone, make these zoning decision changes, that, that impacts the future of the town for decades and decades to come, and you can't go back on it. I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'd love to hear how everyone else feels about this, but my initial reaction is I think this would be problematic for Burlington.
Uh, this is the, I, I haven't read this yet. So, you know, I, I really think that we ought to put this on the agenda, uh, or have a discussion of it after chance we've read it. One thing I think that's heavily in our favor is we're one of the few towns that follow up, that have followed all the rules. We've been as good a doobie as you can be. We've kept over ten percent. We did a friendly forty B, you know, and really led the way as far as that's concerned to, to increase. And we have thirty percent of our housing is already, uh, either, uh, you know, apartments, condos, uh, assisted living and all of that kind of thing. So what more do you want? The only place in this, we don't want to get this discussion now, but Todd Fremont Smith, I remember at one of the land use meetings, wanted to feel them out as the, to the possibility. Apparently, the, he likes the condos that they have up there, and they just finished the new ones. And he was kind of feeling them out about the possibility of doing one of those on Northwest Park. And by the way, we used to have him come in periodically or ask him to come in, and we haven't seen Todd for a long while. And that's, you know.
He would be happy to come in. I met with him yesterday.
Wow, how do you like that?
He can come in and tell us what his plans are for the circle outside of Wegmans.
Well, I just.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking we.
He'll be out down in the Boston Globe site for a while, but he'll, he'll come by whenever he wants.
And that's a very important property to us. So I'm very pleased that he came to us, because if not, I was going to suggest that we invite him in.
I agree.
To update us.
I agree with what you're saying, Paul, in that Burlington has followed all the rules and has been very, very careful and progressive about that. But what concerns me about this is a developer could come in, according to this, and decide he wants to develop, uh, develop a site with, you know, quarter acre lots or even smaller lots that allow for homes to be built, built closer together and would only need a simple majority to get that zoning change from town meeting.
Well, you.
Whereas now, I, I like the two-thirds majority because zoning decisions are so important and they have such a lasting impact. I think it should have a super majority vote by town meeting.
You could, you could, you could actually look at it the other way, though. And I, I mentioned the same thing you did to somebody, and they said, but, but look at it the other way. I said, what do you mean? They said, well, right now, thirty-three percent of the town meeting members are determining the zoning, not six, in other words, if they wanted to.
Preventing a change.
Right.
The zoning is already there, yeah.
To any change to the zoning bylaw right now requires sixty-six percent.
Right.
Which means thirty-three percent of the town meeting members, if they vote no, or thirty-four percent if they vote no, they're actually controlling the zoning.
They're preventing a change.
Yeah, but, no, so the way you need to look at it is go back one step further.
Go ahead.
For that zoning to have been enacted to begin with, it had to be approved by two-thirds. So now, you're saying any change to that should be by two-thirds. So it's been already approved by two-thirds. So.
Right.
What you're saying is that now, even though it's been approved by two-thirds, you should be able to change it with less than two-thirds, and that's not true.
When it was approved by two-thirds.
Right.
Um, it was still controlled by the minor, by the minority, although it was approved. You know what I.
Well, it was, it was approved by two-thirds. So it got voted in. It wasn't a negative, it was a voted, it got voted in by two-thirds. So it got voted in by a super majority. So why should you be able to change that by less than a super majority?
Because there are probably some zoning changes that were proposed that did not pass because thirty-four percent of the people, of the town meeting members voted no. So in that case, they were controlling it. You see what I'm trying to say?
No, but I get it. But what I'm saying is, as Barbara said, you're really looking to change something that's been enacted by a super majority.
Right.
And you're saying we can change it by less than a super majority. It shouldn't be the case.
I think you need to ask yourself the question, on what basis, going back many years, did we establish that it was prudent and right to get a two-thirds majority? Has that changed? Or what has changed to ask us to look at it differently?
Didn't.
And, and I don't see that, that's anything substantially changed, other than the home builders are pushing this.
Why are we one of the.
And I'm asking the, if the home builders and developers are successful in getting this statute changed to make it easier for them to build more buildings, they should be required to give up some of the long-term vested protections or grandfathering they have in the property. So just as it is easier for them to get it zoned to their liking, it should be just as easy for us to zone it to our liking and take some of those protections away from them, which they have in the statute. So don't change just part of the statute favoring the home builder.
But the us you're talking, the us you're talking about, the us they're talking about is town meeting.
I'm talking, us being the community. Town meeting represents the.
Town meeting represents the community. So.
I believe this.
I know. I, the, the other, the other, why are we the only state in New England that still does it this way?
According to. Some states don't have any zoning at all. Does that mean they're better than us?
No. But why are we one of the few states in the country that still go it this way?
Because we like to. We voted for it. And if I may, I would again suggest that I be given an opportunity to read this.
Of course.
So I can participate in the discussion.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
I believe it's important enough for us even to put an agenda item if we want, to give us time and put it on.
I agree.
Because the game's going to be over soon. We're not going to see any of it.
And maybe, Barbara had asked me to bring it up as a summary, to really open.
No, I.
All right.
I think it's an issue we should talk about.
What I would like to do is, we have it, let everybody have a chance to mull this over, read it over, and have a discussion at another meeting. Perhaps we could even ask Ken Gordon to come and discuss it with us, if, if we think that's appropriate.
I've already emailed Ken Gordon, and he says he doesn't know a lot about it. He's not on that committee, but when it does come out of committee, he will be in communication with me. And I can say with us, I've also emailed my concerns about it to Senator Friedman.
Okay, good.
And, and I think, just to, to highlight Jack's point, I think what Jack's bringing up is a really fair aspect to bring up in terms of, you know, I, I mean, I think one of the challenges we have as professionals and you, we have as in the town is hurdles for change and to actually make things better, um, that, or that we think are better because of, one, the high hurdle of the two-thirds. But the second, even more challenging, is the ability for property owners to vest their rights so, so easily. So it's, you know, I think the yin and the yang of it, I, and what, you know, Jack, what Member Kelly's bringing up is, is a really valid point in terms of, you know, if it's going to be this, let's, let's really talk about this, for us to really be able to make that effective change.
Right.
Stick without all these like, get out of, you know, get out of a free card.
With the understanding that we don't have the final say here. Really, all we could do probably, am I correct in understanding that all we could do would be to ask our representatives to consider our viewpoint, you know, after we give it consideration, we could put a letter together to Ken Gordon and Cindy Freeman.
Right. And as we continue to talk about this, I mean, you always want to say, you know, I like or dislike it, but if this goes forward, please consider these, these types of kind of balancing amendments to.
Is this the same bill, or essentially the same bill that has died in committee two years in a row now?
No, this is a brand new bill. This is a brand new bill that has no, nothing tagged onto it.
But is the substance any different than what died two years ago?
Yes.
That was multi-page.
Yes, this is very, this is different. This in format is different.
What happened to smart growth? That was supposedly, because the, what, what the, the background for this to me is that they say that our ability to grow in manufacturing and in all the high-tech stuff we have is being limited by the unavailable, unavailability of housing, particularly on the lower end, where the young people are just getting out of college and so forth, coming in, and they aren't able to find housing. So I thought that, and, and when they did the smart growth, they said, they, they made it advantageous to grow around transportation nodes, because these people, more and more, don't have an automobile now. So I, I wondered what kind of an effect that had. But to me, this is the same kind of push to, to push housing into areas that have been reluctant to even, you know, obey the rules as they are now or try to, uh, be conservative. The town of Winchester has been fighting tooth and nail, as you know, for the last three or four years to keep any more housing out.
I think the rhetorical question to ask is if you tell the developer he can build on a third of an acre instead of a half an acre, he's still going to build a seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar house that a lot of these people aren't going to be able to afford.
Exactly.
So there, there has to be some other teeth in there. Rather than ten percent affordability, there has to be something more than that. Uh, and I think we have to limit the size of the houses on those smaller lots, not just by setback, by some other dimension which forces them to be more affordable. Otherwise, we've, we've gained nothing except more density and, and no benefit. And, you know, this, this bill, I'm convinced, is being driven by the home builders and the developers. And I don't know that the average person is getting enough voice in this as to what they want to see happen in, in their neighborhoods.
Well, our representatives, both of them, have been very available. You want to go with, when they're having their hours and so forth, or anytime, you can pick up the phone and call Ken Gordon, and he'll be happy to talk with you. So I don't, you know.
So as I mentioned, I'm trying to get, um, some folks from the housing choice office to come out so we can have a forum and discuss all the specifics of it. Okay?
And that's a good segue into, can we get back on getting the master plan complete?
Yes.
A lead?
Yeah, that's, I think we stopped on housing, right?
Yeah, well, let's.
Housing in town center.
We have two.
Okay, well, no, I, I mean.
Two top.
Yeah.
What Ernie brought up, we kind of stalled on.
Those are the two elements left, yes.
But, um, the next item for our discussion is the town center committee, too. I thought that's what you were saying.
No, I was saying those are the two elements of the master plan that we, we need to complete.
So town center committee.
So just to bring up, there was some discussion this week, and, and Joe, if you want to add to it as well, um, about the town center committee and the three A committee and the kind of the, the seemingly dissolution of the three A committee.
Is there a parking committee for the seniors, for the human services?
There's a subcommittee.
There's a meeting in.
There's a subcommittee?
June.
I, I would like to know when those are going on.
Yes.
It's June twelfth, I believe.
But the question that was raised this week for the, the town center, as we've been discussing kind of off and on for a long time, um, is three A, um, and the planning board right now kind of taking over the, as by the bylaws, taking over the design review aspects. But the three A committee, as it was established, was really, um, both streetscape, roadway, um, economic development, merchants association, and then design. And we went through the, um, the zoning change for the overlay district, and I think we've been successful in, in moving forward design. But we haven't really spent a lot of energy with the other aspects. And the question is if we want to bring the committee back together, um, where does that committee sit? Who should be involved? And kind of just reinvigorate that discussion overall with this board, as well as the board of selectmen and other members to kind of get that, get that going again. It was a really vibrant commuted, committee, um, at least when I was on it since the mid two thousands. Um, and I think did a lot of good when it was formed, and I, if we can continue with that. And, um, just, again, just going to reinvigorate the committee and, and try to do some of these great things and programming through the town center and just bring everything together. I, I, so it, it's just, wanted to talk through this board about that idea and kind of open it up for discussion and, again, not can finalize anything, but just bring the topic up. So, Joe, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, you know, I think with the discussions I've had more recently on it, um, it, it, it appears that the decision to kind of disband in the loss of interest was, was under John Patron, and it, and, you know, Paul Sagarino may have a different opinion on that. And I think, you know, in, in really thinking about it, and, and as I said, the discussions I've had with, about it in the past week or two, you know, there, there really seems to be two focuses. Uh, one of them is design, which clearly we need to continue on. Uh, but that is something that, that piece of it does report back. It's a recommendation committee to the planning board. So it may very well be that, and there are many items with the downtown that maybe more appropriate, appropriately fall under the, um, venue of the board of selectmen. So, you know, there, there are certainly issues in relation to three A, you know, who's going to control, you know, whether down the road we move towards, you know, gaining control of three A or, uh, which is one of them. We still have the, the whole sign, you know, piece of the bylaw or the overlay that we really need to get finalized. That, that's a huge item.
Yep.
It's actually, it's a really good time with Mike, Mike Murray being chairman of the board of appeals and having the whole history of the town center.
He was the only original.
Yeah, so those, so those items may.
Yeah.
More appropriately, appropriately be from the board of selectmen. So maybe, Paul Sagarino, maybe he wants to, you know, re, uh, reestablish a piece of it there. And then the design piece of it, maybe we, it goes under our control, and we put together a, for design review as the applicants come forward. So, you know, it, it may just take it on a, a, just a different look to it or a different feel to it as we go forward. Maybe we break it down into, into two different committees. But at least that needs to be discussed. Um, and maybe reapproach, reapproach the board of selectmen to see if they are, at this point, even interested in doing that, or whether it's, the whole thing will be through the planning board.
To my, to my recollection, um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I am wrong, I know that we, we did a lot of talking about the whole of three A under the, the previous master plan. I, I've got all sorts of.
Yep.
Paper I keep on running into. And we could never get a this, get a really good feel for what, some people wanted two lanes in each direction. Some people want in one lane in each direction with a big grass island in the middle. And just before I said, well, anyways, so the, the, the original committee ended up under the selectmen. I think if, if we had started from just the town center, I think it would be more appropriate to have been under the planning board, because it's, that's, we were dealing with zoning. We made some zoning changes. We, we have design review. So I, I don't see a problem with the, the town center committee as a whole being planning board.
Under the planning board, yeah. Yeah, the only, there are pieces of it that you can arguably say the board of selectmen would have us, you know, if, if we were to discuss issues like taking over control of three A.
Right, okay.
Board of selectmen are going to clearly have to take that ball and run with it. You know, and we did. You remember years ago, that we actually had a design for those islands out there and.
Right.
You know, then we ran into problems with, you know, well, okay, that's under the control of, you know, the state and this and that. If we were to gain control, we could do, we could redo those islands, have all that, you know, redone with beautiful landscaping and maybe some monuments or some, you know, something on the islands out there. But in other words, that, that opens up a lot of different options for us as well if we do that. So I think for that purpose, we may want to, and, and maybe if, if we talk about control, maybe we only talk about, maybe we don't talk about control from, you know, from boundary to boundary, from Bill Rickett to Ubin. Maybe we talk about control of the overlay piece of it.
Just I. Just not.
You know, and, and then we, you know, the other part of it, that really would be something that the Board of Selectmen should be involved with, I would think was maybe, ultimately, my goal would be to have all of the, um, power lines underground. You know, so, maybe the, uh, you know, the, the, the pursuit of some sort of grant, you know, that we do to, you know, and that may all be piece of, you know, the negotiation between the town and the state in the takeover of that. 'Cause clearly, the state doesn't want the road. They'd rather us have it. So there may be some negotiating factors that we can put into that, if we do take it over. So, you know, again, some, there are pieces that the Board of Selectmen, so, I mean, I, there's two ways. You can either look at it in, in a sense that maybe we do it in two different committees, or maybe we do it under one committee, but we, you know, we, we put two seats for members of the Board of Selectmen on there so that they can bring it back and discuss anything in the second place, and various ways of doing it. So I guess we gotta figure out which makes more sense, as far as that goes.
I think the state said, more or less, you can have it, and you own it.
That's right, but, you know.
And the Selectmen said, no, want some.
They were concerned about the, they were concerned about the cost of the maintenance of it.
Yeah, I'm saying, well, that's what the state says.
State actually said, at least a meeting I went to, at District Four with, might've even been, was it Terry? Well, anyways, and we were there for something else, and they, and we had started to, we were there talking about the barn, actually.
The DFW, yeah.
Right, right.
They wanna sell us that, but give us the road.
Right, they, they, we said, when are, when are you gonna give us the barn? Which was, which was a verbal commitment under the Sun Microsystems whole thing. And they said, uh, nobody ever told us, we need that, you're not gonna get that. But they did say, yeah, you can have roof, we'll give it to you for, for box. They even said, tell us what you want us to do to fix it before you turn it over to us.
And that, and that, yeah.
But it wasn't a Planning Board thing, and, uh, the Selectmen really never got into it.
And that's the thing, so maybe through that discussion, and if, you know, it, it may be one of those things where the negotiate, they, I, they think they really do wanna turn it over. So maybe we get repaved, we get new walkways, we get underground util, you know, who knows? What we're gonna be able to get in, in, in return for taking the road over. And, when you take it over, obviously, from day one, we now will receive Chapter Ninety funds, so the maintenance of it, you know, should be paid for as well, or at least partially paid for, through the Chapter Ninety funds. So I guess that's a discussion, you know, but I, but I really do feel this, I mean, there's a lot going on in the Downtown Center, and I, I just feel like we're, we're, we're at a tremendous disadvantage if we don't have that, at least the review piece of that together, on, you know, a meeting on a fairly regular basis. There are also items that need to be, well, we said the butt sign piece of it. But I think there's, there's also material tweaking that needs to happen. And I think, you know, through the time we've gone, as we've seen some materials that I don't think we'd really wanna have in there at this point in time, and maybe some changes to some of those things. And, you know, with, it's been a learning curve, so I think, you know, that, that should be an ongoing transformation, and, you know, until it gets to the final product that we all feel is, is the best product, you know. But, again, you can't do it unless we're, unless the committee is together. So I, maybe we reach out to, to Paul Sagarino and see if.
If any of you, if you wanna kind of designate two of you to, to do that outreach, to see what the temperature is on some things. I know the last time we, Jack and I went to meet with the Selectmen and, and John Petron, a year and a half ago, about it. But now that there's, you know, kind of a new, new board, a couple new, new members, and a new town administrator, I think it's time to have that conversation. So obviously, Joe, you'd like to be part of the discussion.
But I think Joe has the history and the passion for it. Is there anyone else that would want to work with Joe on this?
Well, Bill was, Bill was really active, Ernie was active, these, you know.
Sure, yeah, I, I would say that, uh.
We had three members, right, didn't we?
Yeah. What I saw the benefit of that is, is that, um, when, when, when I took over as chairman, it changed from kind of that overall 3A to more of the design piece, because the past chairman was kind of more involved on the other side of it, and kind of swung the other way, where I, I was coming from as Board of Appeals, Planning Board, kind of design standpoint. But what I, I, I thought was a, been a huge benefit was the talent that we had on that board with regard to the design piece. There was, and, and I kinda, I kinda missed that, when we were going through this stuff, there's expertise, there was, you know, the different brainstorming, so I thought it was a great benefit, even just from a design standpoint.
If you want a third, I will volunteer, I have a little more time now than I did in years past.
That, it sounds wonderful. I think what we, the first step is really, as Joe said, is to reach out to Paul Sagarino, and probably to the Board of Selectmen, and, and see what their interest level is.
So, Robert, do you think, so we, should we, as a board, direct, uh, the staff to reach out, or, you know, should we?
Staff, plus those of you that are interested, yeah.
Yes, yes.
To set up.
I think the, the subcommittee, which we just named, which I, I.
Yeah, if I can, my, my time is somewhat limited in the day.
If you prefer, I know Ernie's eyes lit up at the opportunity.
I'll be, you know, Bill can't make it, I'll, I'll be in the alter, that kind of thing, sure.
Jack, Joe, and possibly.
If I, if we set something up, then I'll just, whoever can make it. I mean, with these informal conversations to start out, and then when it gets more formal, make sure everyone.
Formulize it later, okay.
I think, I think it's a real value to have some of you there to really talk about the history and value of the committee. I mean, there, a lot of times in towns, it's, oh, let's just appoint a committee, and a committee, and a committee, and a committee. But this committee was a really hard-working committee, and really passionate, not that other ones are not. But, you know, it, you know, I've been on a lot of committees, and I, I just, I think there was a real value with the diversity of this, this committee, in terms of the objectives that we were trying to achieve in the Town Center.
There was good participation by the residents, too.
Yeah.
More so than.
A lot, yeah, remember, we, well, yeah, there was.
Can we just say we'll ask staff to.
Right after the master plan.
Reach out to Paul Sagarino to set up an initial meeting to discuss. Okay?
Mayor Chair.
The 3A Committee doesn't even exist on paper anymore.
Uh, before we, uh, we, before we wrap up, the Planning Board is required to designate, what the, the bylaw says, one member to be on the Recreation Commission.
I don't know anyone would be willing to do that, it's a lot of work.
Did we do that already?
Yeah, I think we did, wasn't it Jack?
When do we do it?
Well, I think we.
Cause I wasn't here.
You have to meet, you were here.
We voted somebody else.
Jack agreed, uh, Jack agreed to split his stipend among us, so we voted, we elected.
Would someone like to nominate someone?
I'd like to nominate Paul Raymond.
Is there anyone that can say, okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those who would like to nominate, to, um, appoint Paul as our representative on.
A continuing representative.
That's right, for recreation.
It's been like nineteen weeks now.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Oh, I did it one year.
All right, seven zero, Paul.
Ask Joe if it's not a hard job. He did it for one year, and look at him.
He picked a bad year to do it.
You're exactly right. I think they waited for all the issued things.
Well, no, he did all the good stuff.
Can I do that?
It's still two to one Bruins, they have not started the third period yet.
All right.
Two to one Bruins, okay.
I gave Ernie.
Just really, very quick, Middlesex Commons, they just paved the back entrance, coming in from the back, from Muller.
Oh, okay.
There used to be a speed bump, it's gone.
Oh, okay.
Should there be? Was it in the site plan?
In through H mark?
No, no, the other way, from Muller Road, Jack.
Ramp down from Muller Road.
There's a ramp down from Muller Road.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
And I, I noticed it the other night, I was there, and it.
You can check out of there, Ernie.
I, I don't know if they just haven't replaced it yet, or if it's even in the site plan. They actually had one of those little rubber strips there for a while, I don't know. And the other thing is, if you've been to Leahy Clinic at all lately, there's big signs all over the place which say, our primary care doctors have moved to sixty-seven South Bedford Street.
Yeah, they're on South Bedford Street. It's great, because you don't have to pay for the parking, there's a lot of parking.
There is, that was my question, I have never been over there.
You have to be careful, because they don't have a good signage there. And there's a brown sign that just says sixty-seven Bedford, or whatever.
And you don't even think it's South Bedford Street.
You think it's really Kimball Ave, but it's.
But my, my, my point is, uh, there's different parking ratios, that sounds like a change of views, have they ever come here? Da-da-da-da.
Oh.
I mean, they, they did a nice job on my heart valve, they just don't do a too good a job on, on.
But I think that was to my point a couple of meetings ago, where I said, you know, when Leahy changes, they're all say parking. They let us know, and to where, 'cause that changes wherever they're shooting it.
No, we just did the, uh.
And, uh, so we should be informed of a change in that.
I don't know.
To your point, Ernie, whether it's the primary care doctors, or some of the specialists, it's the same function.
But before, it wasn't, it was an office building.
Right, oh, it was, okay.
We have different parking ratios for medical offices.
That's literally the definite, definition example of why we bring people in, to go from office to medical.
Although Paul says there's plenty of parking there, is that right?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, all of the thing by their, by their entrance is designated as Leahy parking. For parking for Leahy patients.
You know, I, I don't, I'm not trying to.
But if you missed what I said earlier, their bus stop is gonna be there, their brand-new ones are gonna be there soon.
Is that the solar heated one?
It's the fancy one.
Where's the bus stop going to be?
Where the old one is.
Same location, but like a prettier, nicer version.
It's gonna be by the main entrance, or?
Oh, outside on Mall Road.
Yeah.
By the main.
Well, I know all, I know all that, 'cause Jane and I spend so much time up there, they're getting to know us.
There you go.
Good to see you again. They don't bother to direct us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie, Joe?
So, just a quick item, and, um, actually, two. One, one was that tree, have we heard anything about that big tree that was chopped to pieces up in, uh, on 3A there? Just, just north of Building Nineteen, side on the right hand side.
Is that the I, the I?
The I, yeah.
Well, they took, they took the, uh, the wire off.
Oh, they did, that's right.
What's the plan over there?
We could, we could try and do some recon on that.
I mean, that, if that's being taken down, they need to replace that in the center, right?
Yeah, but they brought the wood up to Alma Road.
They should, yeah, that's, that's a big piece of wood. Secondly, the, the piano place, that, I don't know what is going on with that building in the front, but there's, they got, you know, siding torn off of there, actually.
That's terrible.
Some pieces of siding were literally on 3A, on the road, for about two weeks. They're gone now, but siding's fallen off of it, it's, you know, they're leaving it on the road. Clearly, they, they're not maintaining that at all, there's a problem.
No, it's terrible.
They haven't even opened their, why haven't they even opened their original building?
They have a temp.
They did, they're open, aren't they?
Are they open?
They have a temp.
I don't know, I mean, I never.
There's pianos in that building.
Are there any customers, though?
I haven't seen many customers.
I think the back building's open.
No, the back building is.
There's a sign, actually, they have signs in the window, piano.
They have a temp search, CO.
Which is another problem, they can't be putting signs in that out, that, in that front building, that already looks like.
They said the four windows, 'cause they couldn't put, they couldn't have, they signed windows there, because they didn't wanna have the sun on the pianos. So now they put.
You're talking about the front building, right?
So the front building.
Oh, the front building.
They put big signs, piano sale, on that massive a building out front.
Oh, okay.
Boston Bullion moved in there now, right, I see a sign for them.
Boston what?
Bullion. They were originally in the bank, to Town, but then they moved down to one oh one.
One oh one.
And now, I think.
Oh, they're in one thirty-five?
I thought I saw a sign there, unless I was dreaming. I'll, I'll check it out tonight.
Okay.
But you know.
All right.
So, um.
That's, thank you, Adam Schreiber.
Jay, I did a laundlist, maybe, so I was gonna start off with Town Center, since the snow has melted, the feather signs have appeared in the Town Center.
Well, you guys will be so happy to hear that we have made a great contact with the Shell.
Both Shell station owners.
And she seemed like she was not gonna put up with a lot of, you know, well, they run at her, own it.
It's a problem all over town.
She was a good person to meet.
Good.
So, the Shell stuff.
It's a problem everywhere, all over town.
So, feather signs.
So that was, so you're talking about the Shell in the center of town?
Both, yep.
Okay, so that one has, that, no, that one has feather signs, but it has signs that are wrapped around the posts?
Yep.
As the CVS.
The CVS?
Yeah, they've got the five dollars, if you get the shot, you get the five dollar, right at, right at the lights there. So, you know, there's, uh, there's some at the granite place between, and I can do a laundlist, and I can send this stuff.
Yeah, if you can send it to us, that would be beneficial.
Another thing that reminded me, I was at Sun Microsystems, and again, that Meyer Landscaping, had the, uh, shipping containers there, and then the landscaping trucks. So I, kind of my thought is, is that with, you know, uses that aren't initially planned to be there, I know that was back in maybe the fall.
Where were you?
This is, uh, Microsystems is.
Like a landscape.
Meyer Landscaping, if you looked at the last meeting minutes I had, Josh, I sent you an email on that, I've got further around than that. And so, I can, I'll send you pictures on that one, too. So there gets the big shipping containers there. And then my, my third side I talked about before was, maybe if there's gonna be a shipping container on-site, which I see a lot of them around town, maybe that, you know, says that they should come in for a minor engineering change and that, because now they're changing kind of the parking on the site, they're changing the tent of the site, something like that.
Well, they're, if they're there for over a year, they need to come to us. If they're there for under a year, they need a permit from the building.
So we can see.
So they need something.
Yep. The other thing I, I was down, North Ave, Third Ave, Fourth Ave, where we put our three solar panels up. And again, I encourage everybody to go there and check it out, to see where our first cut of that was.
Nice job.
Uh, if you have seen it, then I'd like to hear your comment, 'cause evidently you haven't seen it. Because it's, uh, you know, there were things about putting it in the back, since it's not gonna be out in front. And if you look at, uh, if you, I really encourage everybody to take a look at what the results were on that one. You know, 'cause I think we'll see more of that, but we can learn from our experiences there. Uh, just talking 3A signage, since we have a new billing inspector, I guess, do we, is that the word? Is, is he more inclined to, you know, kind of enforce signs?
He, um, I know one of the main objectives of, they are adding an inspector, but he's trying so hard to have them start in July, but I guess he was told they can't, he can't have one until January. But one of the main objectives of that inspector is to really help.
Enforcement.
Enforcement, with both enforcement and, um, kind of zoning Board of Appeals, kind of.
Mm-hmm, no good.
Just work, and, but it, for sure, a lot of the stuff that we see here, that they have trouble keeping up with.
And just, just talking about legal signs in Town Center, we had our state rep actually put one out there for his hours. And it hung out there, and the wind blew it down, so, you know, it's, uh, it's funny that, uh.
Somebody, just recently, in the past few days, somebody's trying to sell mattresses or something, they see signs.
That's the school, that's the school, that's the music department's doing that, yeah. So, yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor Chair.
Thank you, thanks.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Oh, Joe, come on, I was.
I knew, I, I knew, in the back of my mind, it had something, but there are two boxes that have gone up, donation boxes that have gone up, uh, in two different locations. One, I think, is AJ Rose, in that parking lot, and I, and I think the other one is actually at that Shell Station down there, right? In the park, right?
Really?
But they put them right up.
Which one?
The one at the bottom of the hill?
The bottom of the hill, but they put them right up on the, both of them, like, you can touch them from the sidewalk, right? So they, they're like smack dab right in the hill. You know, in their multiple double boxes, so they're, they're fairly big, you know, but, again, I mean, those are taking, not only taking up parking spots, you know, should be before us for, you know, site stuff on.
And as a proposed owning, those are homes.
So, I, I think just with the feather signs, if you have a connection, I know you guys said you had a connection, at the Dunkin' Donuts downtown? You guys have a good relationship there, do you?
Yeah, sure.
So there's a big feather signs, you're coming down, it's right under the light. And then they also, in the drive-in, they have one on the side, and then they have another one.
The one in the center?
They said they don't have the billboard there anymore.
The billboard's not there, but the fe, they've got a nice feather sign under the light.
It's just so bright.
Couple of ones through the drive-thru, right in the center of town, which, uh, we want.